Has everybody inspected the new medic unit to the degree they want to, or do you wanna go out and look at some more?
Mr. Chairman, I was thinking we'd go out so that they could give us a brief, few minutes tour of it and explain some of that.
Okay, I mean, I've had my tour.
I understood.
We weren't here, or you weren't here when I showed up.
Alright.
Well, now we know where you are.
No, I got mine tour last week. A private tour. Go ahead.
We figured this way we'd get the tour before being a customer of this.
Okay.
And again, trying to let you see all the pieces put together and how it's entirely one system that we're, again, able to provide the highest level of EMS services to the citizens of Orange. Again, thank you.
Alright. Thank you.
Let's just go into the...
Any more questions about the ambulance?
Why is it red and white?
We actually let the staff make the decision of what they wanted, since this was a time where basically we're gonna be replacing the fleet. And we put it out to the staff and let the staff make some decisions on how they would like to see the units, and it actually came from the ground up.
It's closer to the Lake of the Woods colors.
Hmm.
Next year's budget, I expect to see a paint.
Orange and blue right up here.
One of the things we're trying to do, get the staff involvement, let them know that they're part of the team and, again.
Okay, let's go to the next item. Fees for the, unless anybody else has any more questions or comments about it?
No.
Let's go ahead with the fees for use of fire EMS, staffing at events.
Alright, I'm just gonna open up by letting you know that we're requested to provide standbys at a lot of the different events in Orange County. And I just have one of the brochures, I think y'all have seen, with the different events. The one highlighted in pink, we've actually been requested to provide service, standby service. And one of the things worth doing is seeking guidance from the board, because a lot of times we are not able to provide this standby with our duty staff. We would be required to bring people back off duty. Obviously, when that happens, we incur cost, and we, again, are seeking guidance from the board. We have some suggestions of what we feel would be appropriate, but again, so that we're providing services to the citizens, but it's consistent across the board. So if there's, you know, all events are basically treated the same. So with that, I'll let Chief Joyce take over. He has worked, basically taken information from the Sheriff's Department and how they charge for events, and come forward with that and answer some of your questions that you had from the previous work session.
I have one question, either one of you can. If, if you've got an ambulance on duty, can they stand by until they get a call?
And I, yeah, I'm gonna address that.
Okay, that's fine.
Those two situations. So what we had done here was, really the research behind this is going to look for something that's similar within the county. And I went to the sheriff's office, and they've done this over the years, most specifically at the Montpelier races. I went out then, and UVA have a particular group within emergency medicine that they call Special Events Management. And I went back and I looked at some of their pricing and some of the ways that they arrive at theirs. And it's probably a bit more complicated than we wanted to get into. So I went back and I looked at how we previously did this, because we received lots of requests. And as I said in the memo, we've received an enormous more amount of requests for some reason. And I think that's probably because there are more events going on. But we do, and to answer your question, what we normally do is, if you don't have a requirement to where you must have a dedicated vehicle that can't leave your site, we try to do that with on staff. I'll tell them, look, you may get different trucks circulate in and out. If it's, you know, if they're gonna be there for two hours, we'll try and swap another truck from another district, come in and give the guys a break. But we don't, we've never charged for that. And, but the caveat on that is that we have to answer calls for service. So you could get stuck with your event and have no coverage. Now, for some of the people, that's, that's very acceptable. That's an acceptable risk and they're fine with it. But some of the requests I get, the races being one of them, the jockey clubs, very firm rule on protection that must be there. The senior steward's gonna have to stop the races if they don't have a certain amount of coverage, and there's just no discussion on that. Some of the races that have come through, the human races, the five Ks, their insurance has a requirement that they must have a certain amount of coverage. So for them to have a truck leave has the potential to stop their event. So for them, that's obviously not a reasonable option. Previously, we had done this, and when we went back and looked at it, even though a lot of these are nonprofits, they do charge. And they hopefully ordinarily would have a budget put on their event. And into that budget, I suggest that it would be very reasonable to put in that fee that I'm proposing in this for them. It's a very reduced fee, and all I did was, I took the overtime rate, because we do not have the staffing to do this. So we put these events out for overtime, and the staff signed up for them. So all I did was I put the overtime fee that I'd have to pay them, and I added in their FICA benefits and everything else. It's cost neutral, we're not, there's nobody making any money at this. And there is then a fee for the use of the ambulance. Like historically, Montpelier will get two ambulances from us. We'll send two up there, but they'll also get lots of other volunteer agencies come along. But we assure them that they're not gonna fall foul of the jockey club, and we promised to have that there. So that's, that's what I'm proposing. I'm proposing that we would continue, if it is possible to do it, with on-duty staff. But for those people who are either for-profit or have a budget where it's very reasonable that they should be budgeting for this sort of thing, that we would put this fee in, which would be fifty dollars per hour, per staff member, with a one-time fee of a hundred dollars for the use of the vehicle. And there was some feedback I had got prior, this was scheduled back in November, and I was away for a while. But there was some feedback I got as to indemnifying. And what happens if the unlikely event that something happens and I have to tell the overtime crew, you gotta take care of the bus crash, and we don't show up and we don't actually come through on this contract? And I spoke to council, and I've given you all there a little, a little sheet of some proposed language we would put in there in the very unlikely event that we couldn't actually come through on our agreement. And that person might suffer some loss because of it, and that would indemnify us. So that's the proposal.
Are football games required to have a ambulance?
Yes.
Yes. And that...
But they, but...
That is question and a discussion that's gonna have to be had at some point or other concerning.
But, but if they, if they have to leave to take somebody from the football game to a hospital, they can continue to play football, can't they?
And I have not seen the regulation. I know working with Dr. Keller, who's, you know, tends, tends to provide their medical direction. It may be able to be happening, but whether it exactly matches the regulation or not, I'm not sure.
I know for the horse races, you've gotta have two, because if one goes, you still have one.
Oh, the jockey, the jockey club is up, there is no discussion. And they have many stewards and the chief steward for the track that day. It's a little bit less formalized at that high school football games.
Yeah, okay.
Question about the rates. Let me say fifty dollars per staff member per hour.
Yes.
Would we insist on a minimum? And if so, should we, should we say that? I mean, it seems to me that you're gonna need, it's certainly not gonna be one person. It has to be some number.
Yeah, you, you would have to have, and there was a presumption, but we certainly can clarify it, that it's a minimum of two staff members in one vehicle. Otherwise, you have no, you have no coverage per se, you don't have coverage.
And, and, and I think we, I think we should say whatever, if there's a minimum, and I, I certainly should.
And I'm perfectly fine with saying a minimum time as well, you would do that in a normal contract anyway. If you're doing this for an hour, it's, the reality is I'm very likely, unlikely to get staff to volunteer for an hour's work.
Sure.
When they have to drive equally to come and do that.
What, what would be a reasonable minimum?
I think two hours would be quite reasonable.
Yeah, minimum, minimum crew of two.
The reality is, I can't remember an event where I've been asked to do one, or we've been asked to do one, that wasn't two, three, or four hours long. I just, you know, even a simple five K run takes multiple hours to get people like me across the line.
Well, you, but you could also say a crew of two with a, with a minimum payment of whatever that would work out to be, three hundred dollars, let's say. I mean, you can do it several different ways. The other question I had was about the ambulance, this is one-time fee. If it's a two-day event, is that a hundred dollars for each day, or is it truly per event?
We have never, we have actually never done consecutive days.
But your intent is per day?
My intent is that it would be, yes, my intent was that it would be per day.
I think I would say, instead of one time, I think I would say, per day, or some, some language like that.
A per day?
Okay.
Well... Per day, I think is what he, what he wants to say. I, I, I think there's, there's a, we should state a minimum staffing.
Mm-hmm.
A minimum either charge or number of hours, either way you wanna do it. And, and the hundred dollars is per day.
Okay.
Just, just so that the...
No, I agree.
It's clear what, what the expectations are.
It makes it, makes it very simple.
I would, I would say a minimum charge, because if it runs less than, than two hours, the expectation is, is still that...
Yeah.
That's what the employee can do for.
Yeah, if it, if it rains like crazy and you cancel the event, there's still a minimum amount to do for it.
I, I agree, I mean, if you're going, if your expectation is to be able to encourage your staff to wanna do this, to earn some overtime, then it has to be made worth their while. And, and risk shouldn't fall to the employee or to you.
No, and, and that's why we, we put this in, because frankly, we, we're doing, like I say, this is cost neutral. And we're doing this to encourage and be able to support the folks who are coming in with events into the county and all the other things that come with having an event. But by that same token, we're just not in a position to, to bear that cost as a department.
Is, is, one of the things that occurred to me is that if there's a cancellation because of weather?
Mm-hmm.
Hurricane.
A hurricane, lack of participation, a number of entrants. Is there an amount of advance knows where they don't know anything, but after a certain time period starts, clock starts ticking, then whether you're, you're going to receive the dollars regardless of whether they hold it or not?
I, I think that's reasonable. I, I think you can put, I mean, I know all the things I've done, you have a twenty-four or forty-eight hour buyout, so to speak. Once the, the problem I have with that, and it's, it's more in encouraging the staff to do it, is these folks will change their personal plans to do it. So if I call them the morning and say, hey, guess what, alright, don't come on in, they may be happy they don't have to come in, but they may have canceled things that are not gonna be able to be restarted in their life. So I think that's very reasonable. I, I do that too many times, and I'm not gonna get a lot of interest to come in.
It sounds like we should, we should have an agreement that, that covers those type of contingencies. I don't know if county attorney or you have some examples or whatever.
I had got counsel to give me that language I gave you, but I think our intent was that once we had this discussion, we would draft a contract that reflected whatever suggestions and language you all, you all had.
I mean, I think it should be a contract that...
Absolutely.
Particularly if, if there's an insurance requirement that's driving it.
The other question that I've got, Tom, I, I can tell you, having been involved with some of the different events, they're looking out, some of them are purely looking out for protection. Is there any way we could also look at doing, just having individual?
In, in all respects?
Not as units, but having one individual working overtime to be there as a first responder. Because that would reduce the cost to some of them, but it would still provide... Hey, the Montpelier Wine Festival is a perfect example. Either that or Constitution Day. Constitution Day is a new event. The, the profit side of that, they're going back in the hole paying for the EMS services. They could afford to have one person working the event that would be there as a first responder until a medic unit could arrive on the scene. Is that something feasible or not?
I, I, I see that, and let me answer that if I can in a yes and a no. I, I see it from, from the organizer's point of view and their, their very limited budget. I would not like to see it being the standard, because one person, as you know, is not going to affect very much.
Right, and, and the, the Montpelier Wine Festival, obviously that's a much larger festival. They would be able to, to handle that burden much easier. But to follow one, the monies just aren't there.
I, I don't have, if it pleased the board, I, I don't have any objection to doing that, just to let you know that it, the payoff is that you're gonna have the ability to perform quite a bit less and in quite a more extended period of time if you wait. As long as everybody's aware of that, and that's a risk that you're, you're willing with.
I, I was just curious if that is a possibility.
I don't think it's, I don't think it could be ruled out, I think it is a possibility.
How do volunteer agencies play in this? I know that Lake of the Woods goes up to Woodbury Forest during the fall for their games and for some of their other events.
Usually, the discussion I have when I receive one of these calls is, have you contacted whomever that may be, whoever is, is in your area? There are times when I have a continued request that our department provide the service. And that's where we are.
The other thing that has happened is we'll have an agency commit, and then at the last minute has to pull out, and then we have to provide the service, and again, it puts us in a...
And the football games are a very good example.
It puts us in a bind, because again, we don't have the staff to be able to do that.
Well, if you're looking at a four-hour event, I can see other units saying, I can do it for less.
And, and like I say, typically, typically in the conversation I, the conversation I have is, have you talked to these?
I think we get two hundred at Woodbury, and when we go down to the, to the races in Culpeper, we get three hundred.
I have never, I, I am not envisaging that event at Woodbury Forest. I've never had a request from them, so I...
No, they call, they call us.
So they have an existing...
They used to use the Orange County Volunteers in Madison, and then they, they started using us.
Yeah, we, we are certainly not getting into special events management business and go out soliciting for this stuff. We're doing it purely to let the folks who are bringing their events into Orange be able to have their event.
That's another good justification for establishing a minimum, as Teal suggests, because you really don't want to have this be other, other than the larger events that, that can't afford and are willing to pay the, the hundred dollars.
Well, especially those that are, have to have it there. I mean, you don't have to have it for the Wine Festival, it's not required, or for Constitution Day, it's just a, a comfort level for...
And the first one we did, 'cause we did the ride, and the first year we covered that, myself and Captain Stewart, we, we covered that event. And then subsequently, they've reached other arrangements, and that's fine. If it's only just to bridge somebody when they get started off, until they get their system in place, that's fine too.
Well, it seems like the smaller events could also, you know, contract with a first responder. I don't know, the county might be able to help with facilitation there. But, I mean, you're really talking about having a school nurse on the scene.
Yeah, that's really what you're talking about.
And somebody who could administer CPR and...
Yeah. Put a Band-Aid on, I mean, you know.
Stop the bleeding?
Yeah. That, that, yeah, 'cause that should be...
I'm not sure what I would go...
Just a bulletin board item, like, you know, your job plots if somebody's interested.
Yeah, and we would, we would not, for our part, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the chief here, we have not, I haven't had his opinion on this before, but we would not look favorably on our, our staff being involved in a private contract, and the reason is medical direction.
That's right, absolutely.
That they, they have to, in order to be covered for medical practice, they have to be engaged in their job process.
That's right, they're not, they're not allowed to practice.
They would, they, they would be hanging a shingle out there, and, and we can't do it.
And that's the same for a volunteer, that's in our system.
Yeah.
They couldn't go out on their own in contract without having their own medical director. We, we ran into this problem in Richmond before I left, it's, it's a huge can of worms.
It is.
Also, we were having troubles at Woodbury Forest, I didn't do any last year, was that an issue? That's fine, you can tell me.
It could be, it could be.
You guys are, again, they're giving you a donation, but if somebody was writing a check to Mary for providing EMS services, that's different.
Okay, alright. So like I said, that needs to be something that's a request that you post it out to the employees.
And then they're covered, their, their medical practice is covered because it's incident to the employment. And we, I, I and the chief are assigning them to that particular assignment for the day, I can assign them anywhere I want.
That's different.
But if, if, if Tom Joyce goes out there and says, I'll take five hundred bucks off you and I promise to sit here all day, and you sign the check to Tom Joyce, I'm out there flying without any practice privilege.
So... Right. No, I, that's why I say, I mean, it's come back. Well, you're, you're breaking the, the, without license, maybe.
Yes, because by extension, I'm, I'm Jeff Alvis, extension of his license, yeah. Unless I can, a lot of these things happen where somebody does this and they haven't, it's really not.
No, no, it's...
Yeah, we, we just shouldn't do it.
It sounds like we're, we're, we're approaching the right situation, 'cause you're, you're not attempting to make this a profit center. You're not, you're not out soliciting this, but also there's a legitimate need that the community has that you want to, to meet. And, and we're, we're somewhere in that balance.
Yeah, we don't wanna get in the special events management business.
Well, I, yeah, I, I think actually we don't wanna, we don't wanna try to compete with, if Lake of the Woods wants to undercut us, then they, they have at it.
Yeah, we, I'm, I'm gonna spend some more time talking to John about that.
He wants to know Lake of the Woods, right, that's where he's going.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just looking at some of those issues of, of O N D and all of that. I need to, I need to sort that out a little bit before, 'cause I hadn't really thought about that, even though I've been up there sticking my neck out.
Whoops, sorry.
Yeah, I wanna tell the, the DVD of this meeting, uh...
Alright, I, I like what we've come up with, and I, I think we oughta go ahead and, and set it up as a, have the attorney draft up a contract by which we do that. And, but I would like to continue to encourage for street festivals and things like that, where, where we can be there, but have, knowing that we have to go for when a call comes in.
Not, not to stir the pot, but the street festivals, some of them are under the same organizations that we were talking about before. So how are we going to differentiate between one event that they hold and a different event that they hold?
Well, in one case, if they're, if they're gonna have a five K run, they've gotta have, they're supposed to have an ambulance on duty, in that which case they, they need a contract.
For our differen, the, the cutoff and the differentiation for our, our department is, have I got to supply that coverage as dedicated that may not leave? If that be the case, this applies. If I can use regular, on-schedule staff and come and go as I need to address the existing call volume, we'll help you out in any way we can. But if I have to stay there and be tied down to you, I have to in some way...
I think that still allows, within existing resources, to, to provide services to the community as much as we can without, without detracting from our primary...
And the majority, frankly, the majority of the ones we do, we do just as that.
Yeah.
We do not.
And usually with these street festivals, the, the Montpelier races, we end up transporting the patient or two out of each one of those events. So it is placing a burden on the system.
But if you, but if, but if you had a street festival here in town, you're gonna transport that person whether you're sitting there or not. Even if you're sitting in the station, you're gonna get called.
But again, when you bring large groups of people together, there is a risk, and there's a risk to the system, and again...
Yeah, but it doesn't make any difference whether you're there or not. You're still, if, if somebody collapses, you're still gonna...
We're coming, but also these are a lot of times for-profit, and when they go to other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions do this on a regular basis.
Yeah, but I mean, that's where our insurance coverage comes in, the insurance that the individual has.
And, and also, we are not the ones making the decision as to whether or not they are need or required the dedicated service.
No, no.
That's their call.
Right.
And, and needs to remain their call.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if county attorney and, and Fire EMS can work up a draft contract and bring that back to another work session?
I think so. I don't, do we, do you think we need another work session here on this?
So you're gonna bring it back for action?
Uh, do we need a, do we need an action on that?
But you'll need to take a formal approval.
Yeah, at least a resolution.
Okay, well, then, then we'll just, uh, bring it back for a formal resolution.
Okay, I'll put it as a new business item for action.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
So you're working as both options, where you can ask for the whole package or just a single employee?
No, no, I think we're, I think we're away from this doing, providing one guy. I think that's, we...
That would be, if possible, that would be my recommendation, whatever pleased the board.
That's fine.
Alright, next item is, changes to the Orange County procurement policy.
Good afternoon. Before you, in your packets, you have some suggested changes and updates. I really just wanted to take this time to let you know some changes in the BPPA and what some other localities are looking into, and how it compares to our current policy that was last updated in two thousand eight. Are there any, are there any outstanding questions that you have, or anything that you would like me to explain a little bit more in depth? I basically just had it mirror the state with a few exceptions. And the state has some more stringent policies for their SWAM vendors. We don't have a vendor database large enough to have as detailed a listing of SWAM vendors as the state does.
There's one question I have, is, in here it says a minimum of four bids. That seems a little ambiguous when you've come before us with only one bid, because that's all that responded.
Uh, this is for four quotes, for if, if, if it's not bid out, um, so...
Even for that, for certain things, four seems...
And, and currently the policy's three, and if for some reason we can't find that third, the department documents it, and that goes through workflow for the purchase order process. So it's at least there for the auditors to look at and know, okay, effort was made, we truly could not find the fourth. And the quantity of four is, is up to you, it's whatever you all suggest.
I just know that you've had difficulties in the past getting...
Getting the, in three.
It, it can be.
Right, so I didn't know if, if you wanted to leave it at the four, or if you had a desire to drop it down?
Um, for example, counties like FAWK here, if it's something that's five thousand and one dollar to thirty thousand dollars, they require three. And if it's thirty to sixty, they require four, because that's usually items like putting in HVAC systems, roofs, things of that nature, where you, you know you're going to have folks who want to quote on that work, medical equipment, things of that nature.
Back to my question, are you comfortable with four?
It'd be easier if it was a little less, but it's, you know, I, I think three gives us good competition, or maybe variating it, you know, five thousand to thirty thousand, three, thirty thousand to sixty-four, or best effort.
I think the four is putting basically an undue burden on the county going through the process, because I know there's been many occasions that you're lucky if you get the three, so...
When, when I look at you, at these comparisons between ours and the state policy, this is not, the state does not require us to follow their policy.
If it's a product or service that is a hundred thousand dollars or less, you have the authority to basically make your own rules, with the exception of professional services that are valued at sixty thousand dollars or greater. So things like insurance, consulting, A E.
So if we wanted to take his thing, thirty to sixty, that that's within our purview without...
Absolutely. Yes, sir, that's your prerogative. And any type of product that is not a professional service, that's a hundred thousand dollars or less, you can create whatever policy you wish, as long as it's in writing.
Okay.
In the old days, when we, when you and I started on the board, anything that was five thousand or more, we had to approve.
Yeah.
You'd see me all the time.
Uh, we did, and that's why we changed it and went up to thirty, but...
I, I think it would make more sense to drop it to the three rather than the four if you're...
Well, given, given the times that we've seen it, the problems with getting even three, I'd hate to push it to four and... Anybody else have a problem with that?
Are you comfortable with coming back to you at the sixty thousand dollar threshold?
For four?
Um, I had written it in here as in general, whether it's a formal solicitation or a quote, that you, I would come to you if it's sixty thousand dollars or greater. Regardless of, of, right now it's thirty.
You come to us for anything over thirty?
Yes, sir.
Question I have, I, I'm comfortable with the sixty, but I, based on the current... Question I have, I I'm comfortable with the sixty, but I, based on the conversation we just had, you know, i- if, for whatever reason, you get one quote, maybe, maybe, you know, if if the uh, if you're in a situation over some threshold, and maybe it's still the thirty, I don't know what it is, that, you know, and you only have one quote, that might oughta come back to the board as well, just because of.
I think it's more visibility, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I and I don't know what the numbers actually are, but it, but a a single quote purchase is something that probably should be, a- as you say, get get some extra visibility to say, we we tried.
And there's also, um, it would depend on the circumstance, but sometimes we can get one quote if it's a sole source. And currently, that's handled by the county administrator, so if it's something that we know of, it's proprietary product, I know only one person
Makes sense.
can can provide, that's currently being handled with a sole source procurement, and I believe you're notified in your weekly summary, um.
And I sign off on those as well.
Yes, and I have to post it downstairs and online, so it's it's open, available to the public. Um, sometimes, I don't know how we can maybe word this in here, but if I feel maybe there's not enough competition, I wouldn't mind being able to use formal solicitation procedures, just to make sure everyone who had a possibility of bidding on it is notified. So even if perhaps it was something that was under a hundred thousand dollars, if a department came to me and said, you know, we could really only find three people, here they are, I would like the option to be able to bid it out formally if I felt maybe the prices were too high, or there would be greater competition if I entered into a formal solicitation. Because I post those on the state website, um, they're on, online on our website, and it's just visible by more people than perhaps vendors, certain departments know to call to get a quote.
Would we be able to do that at 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 basically, uh, in my call, that's subject to, we can approval or direction of the county administrator for that, this solicitation? Then back to to Mr. White's point, um, I would agree, if there are circumstances where we've made every best effort attempt to get people to pro- to s- to give uh proposals in and we just haven't gotten uh quotes in, and it's only one that's available, then I think at least having the the public meeting space as as a place to approve those, knowing the board to kind of ratify that we've done our best effort, and that the public taxpayer knows that we're, you know, trying to do best that we can, but the the market is just not there for that.
So if it's, so if it's a quote instance and not a sole source instance?
Yeah, not a sole source, I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't thinking of sole source, but a quote.
Okay. I like that, it covers me.
Yeah, I just think that's a good idea, anytime that people think, well, these are, this is, you know.
I mean, I don't know where to put the language, but I, it seems to me that it's.
We can find a slot.
There, you know, there are there are times where we've tried the best that we could, and I I know we've come across this, and there may only be one person that saw that this was an opportunity for them to sell a good a service to the county, even though we now require four or so, or three or something like that.
An example would be the latest microphone bid that we did for the sheriff's office. It was a Motorola product, and other Motorola distributors could bid on it, but because they're very um territorial and aggressive amongst themselves, no one else did, and it wasn't for lack of us putting it out there, they just sort of um strong-armed each other into letting one person bid.
Isn't that collusion?
They're often the only person who can sell it, so.
So the, we'll make some of these changes and then bring back the resolution for an action item on the the fifteenth, or do you mean, is that you needed this, I need this now?
Nope, we can absolutely come back. The one new item that I did wanna mention is, um, in speaking with our information technology manager, we thought it might be a good idea to add somewhere in our uh procurement policy that if it's an IT purchase of five hundred dollars or greater, he's at least brought in the loop on it to make sure it really fits the need and the scope of what the department's looking for. And that's something we could handle internally with our um financial software, just putting him in the loop on that.
Okay.
I I think if we're going to try to get everybody migrated, we've had some instances, and just given the organization and people self uh deciding what type of software package or hardware pa- hardware that they acquire, and it really is not something that the information technology uh Larry would agree is the best to surround, okay?
I have one other small thing on page three, under the uh SWAM, as you call it, the very last sentence there, it says, current department shall assist any such business in completing understanding of it, I, it 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 seems to me that we wanna offer assistance or something other than a hard, shall assist.
Okay.
That should be at their, at their request or something like that, just to soften that a little bit.
Absolutely.
I think that's state work.
I mean, I think that's the intent, obviously, but.
Thank you for catching that. Other than that, was, were you okay with the language with, okay? Because that is a requirement now that we need to adopt at least that portion.
But we can't tie him down and say, you're gonna take my assistance whether you want it or not, and I know that wasn't your intent, but.
Any other questions or anything else I can help clarify?
At least we don't have grand set asides.
Exactly.
Not yet.
No, not yet. Um, so we'll have this, I guess, May fifteenth, is that the next one? Twelfth, I think.
Oh.
Sure.
May twelfth for new business action item.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Alright, we've got uh nine minutes before the meeting starts.
Yeah, you can, you can start if you want, just definitely not.
Okay.
Meeting's noticed, so I mean, you can, you can continue. Only thing you couldn't do is a public hearing.
Okay, alright, wanna get started? Does anybody gotta do anything first? Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, make us strong with convictions of justice, wise in judgment, and patient in the service of others. We ask that your grace and blessing be bestowed upon us who have been called to serve the people of Orange County. Help us to represent the people wisely while building on the deeper truths of humanity that come only from you. Amen.
Okay. We've got a couple of changes to the uh agenda. Under the special presentation and appearances, uh, we're moving item three D, three C to three D, and we're adding a new item, three C is the Orange-Madison Culpeper Alliance. And uh, you had some changes for the uh close to the session?
Yeah, uh, you don't have to change the agenda to do that, though, unless you want to.
Alright. No, that's alright. Uh, any other changes to the uh agenda? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alright.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, first, presentation and procl- proclamation for National Travel and Tourism Week.
Alright. Alright. Here we go. Proclamation to declare the week of May second to tenth, two thousand fifteen, as National Travel and Tourism Week. By virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the week of May second to the tenth, two thousand fifteen, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas, travel to and within the United States provides a significant economic benefits for the nation, generating two point one trillion in economic output in two thousand thirteen, with eight hundred and eighty seven point nine billion spent directly by travelers that spurred an additional one point two trillion in other industries. And, whereas, travel is among the largest private sector employers in the United States, supporting one fourteen point nine million jobs in two thousand thirteen, including seven point nine million directly in the travel industry and seven point zero million in other industries. And, whereas travelers spending directly generated tax revenues of one hundred and thirty three point nine billion for federal, state, and local governments, funds used to support essential services and programs. And, whereas, international travel to the United States is the nation's largest single export industry, greater than the export of business service, machinery, computer, and electronics products, motor vehicles, and agriculture. In two thousand thirteen, travel generated a hundred and eighty point seven billion in exports, creating fifty seven point one billion in balance of travel trade surplus to the United States. And, whereas tourism was again, an important contributor to the local economy of Orange County in two thousand thirteen. Orange County's attractions, hospitality, industry, and tourism-related businesses brought in a total of forty three point six five nine million in revenue for two thousand thirteen, which is a one percent increase over the previous year, and provided three point zero eight six million in state and local tax revenue. And, whereas visitation in Orange County continues to increase with visitors attending annual events such as Historic Garden Week, Montpelier Wine Festival, Gordonsville Fried Chicken Festival, Trashy Ribs and Brews Festival, Big Man Bike Show, Orange County Fair, Edible Food Fest, Orange Street Festival, Summer Set Steam and Gas Show, Liberty Ride, Taste of Freedom Wine Festival, Constitution Day Celebration of Montpelier, Gordonsville Street Festival, Montpelier Fiber Festival, and the Montpelier Hunt Races. And, whereas leisure travel, which accounts for more than three quarters of all the trips taken in the United States, spurs countless benefits to travelers, creativity, cultural awareness, education, happiness, productivity, relationships, and wellness. And, whereas travel is a catalyst that moves the national economy forward, now therefore be proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes May second through tenth, two thousand fifteen, as Travel and Tourism Week in Orange County, and urge the citizens of Orange County to join in this special observance with appropriate events and commemorations. Signed and sealed this fourteenth day of April, the H. Frame Chairman.
Might get longer now.
Well, I I think I got them all.
You did, you did very well.
Alright, thank you. Again, this is a big part, we're gonna get a little bit more about that. Thank you. I get it, unit out back is watching. There's a good ventilator up there.
I know they do.
Mr. Chairman, um, I know we've we've started and and the next item is your uh special presentations.
Mm-hmm.
There are a number of folks that I think were interested, certainly in Dominion Power and Madison, and also that there are a number of folks from the tourism industry that are gonna be here. Since we're getting a little bit ahead of schedule, I I might make a recommendation, if we just pass by that section to allow five o'clock to get here and for those folks to to come in, because I would hate for any anybody to be getting here at at five and not being, uh, having the benefit of hearing that. We could go to the consent agenda, and then I would suggest the county attorney deal with his one item, uh.
Okay. Anybody ever problem with that?
Yeah.
Alright, uh.
But before you get to the consent, I have, I missed it when you were modifying the agenda.
Yeah.
I'd like to take uh the April seventh budget work session minutes, and I guess move that to nine C, because I wasn't here.
Okay, that was the April seventh budget work session?
Right.
Alright, we will delete that from the consent agenda, and we'll have a separate vote.
So moved.
Uh?
So moved.
Okay, do I get a second on the consent agenda?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes five zero. Uh, I'd like to get a vote on the April seventh, two thousand seven, fifteen budget work session.
Can you approve? So.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. Passes four zero with one abstention. Okay. Alright, uh. County administrators' report?
County attorney.
County attorney.
Uh, county attorney, I'm sorry, county's attorneys' report.
Mr. Chairman, this is a uh technically a housekeeping matter. We had a military leave policy in place that uh, we have, we hadn't had to deal with this since I've been here, and so we just adopted a military leave policy that complies with federal law, which is that we provide two weeks of paid military leave, but there's supposed to be a credit granted back against what they earn on the military pay. It was brought to our attention, which I missed, that there's a state law provision that doesn't allow us to do that, Virginia law's more generous than federal law, and therefore, we are required by Virginia law to provide those fifteen days of paid military leave. And so this is just an amendment to just recently adopted military leave policy to bring in compliance with state laws, all as well as federal law.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, but Virginia law requires us to do this.
Alright. Can I get a motion to approve that change to the policy?
So moved.
Have a second? Motion's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Alright, let's move back to the uh special presentations, it's now past five o'clock. Uh, item three B, Dominion Virginia Power, proposed Remington, Pratt's, Gordonsville, two hundred and thirty kilovolt line project.
As they're approaching it, as, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, I've been periodically briefing you on uh this project. Uh, that has been in connection with Susan King and others from Dominion Power. Uh, we thought today was the most appropriate time to come forward, now that I think the application's being filed with State Corporation Commissioner.
Yes.
Is in 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 abet to that, so they are here tonight, and I think we've got our, your PowerPoint teed up as well, Susan.
Are you gonna? Okay, terrific.
So, go ahead and introduce yourselves.
My name is Susan King, and I am the state and local affairs representative for Orange County. I also have responsibilities for um Culpeper and for Madison County. Um, and I have brought with me today Rusty Meadows, who's the project manager for this important reliability project, and he's gonna talk through not only the need for the project, but some of the feedback we've gotten from the open houses that were held in Madison and here in um in Orange Culpeper. Um, and so, um, I'll turn it over to him and let him drive, and then we'll keep it brief and be ready for questions.
Okay.
I'm left-handed, so I'll try my best to drive this wagon. Uh, concerning Dominion's um request to build a additional transmission line, uh, we're governed uh by the, PJM is our transmission operator who operates this area, and we were told of a need in this area to increase reliability for uh this section of uh Virginia. Uh, Dominion Virginia Power and First Energy, we're working together on this project to um, to help with this reliability concern in these areas. And um, w- with that, we're proposing the construction of a two hundred and thirty thousand volt line. This line would be running from the uh Remington substation area, southward on an existing transmission line, and connecting over to the Pratt's area of Madison County. Because of that, we would be cutting across parts of Orange County with some of our routes. We have had multiple routes that uh, we've um had open houses, two open houses with uh the areas in question. One open house was at Eastern View High School, and one open house was at Madison High School. Um, those open houses went very well, we got some great input from all the people who attended. We had roughly seventy to eighty people attend the first open house, and about the same number of people attend the second open house in uh the uh east, uh Eastern View High School area. Um, we heard the concerns of all the people that came out. Uh, uh, we know how difficult this is for a lot of people as far as the impact to their farmland, impacted the scenic and historical areas, and we try to take all that in consideration when we try to build a transmission line. Uh, I've been building transmission lines for Dominion for over thirty years, and I have done other lines in this area, uh particularly up in the Culpeper area. We um, we try to align these as best we can along people's property lines, and try to take in consideration, like I said, all the historical and and uh other i- impacts to scenery and everything in this area. Um, we um, we have a lot of constraints once uh, we start looking at building a transmission line, and uh the map in question here just shows some of the local constraints, it's a, it's a very busy map. There are a lot of battlefields, historical properties, conservation easements, and a variety of different uh other constraints that we try to work around to to do that. We first developed a study area and sent that study area out to a large group of people in these three county area, and uh to draw interest, to have people come to the meetings. Then once we, uh, the people began to attend the meetings, we showed two routes where we had worked our way around through these, all these constraints. And it's from those meetings then that we draw additional information, information that we might not have. that we might not have about pending conservation easements or pending other areas. For instance, an old cemetery that might be on someone's property that's not really listed somewhere that, that we can find out about through the impact, you know, of working with the people that come to our open houses. With that, with this map, you can see that the, the next map, it shows what was originally our working area was between an orange and a green line. Then we found additional constraints as we began to work with it. We have been working the last two weeks since our last open house to come up with some additional routes after some of the information that we've received from a lot of the folks that came to our open houses. And so we are now working on trying to work our way around through some of these constrained areas, again, to, to try to make this as hopefully painless as possible. We still know it's gonna be painful for a lot of folks to have a line on their property. All this is being done, like I said, to improve their reliability. The Pratt's area serves about eighty eight hundred customers. It's a Rappahannock Electric Substation that's being fed by a First Energy Transmission Line being fed from a Dominion Substation. So I'll be more than happy to take any questions that you might have.
Do your existing lines not have the adequate capacity?
The existing line right now that runs from Remington Substation to Gordonsville is a hundred and fifteen thousand volt line. That has been the line that has served this area. The line number on part of that line is the two line. We started with number one. So you can imagine that line has been there for quite some time. Its average height is about fifty to fifty-five feet and that line, that entire one fifteen KV system is to the point by twenty eighteen is the information that we compiled from PJM, that line will be in overload conditions under certain conditions. And that capacity then is not available on the one fifteen system is the reason why we upgrade to a higher voltage that has greater capacity.
If you upgrade the existing lines to two hundred and thirty kilovolts, will you increase the capacity enough to, to solve the, the capacity problem?
If we just upgrade the transmission line and don't pull any of the customers off of the one fifteen system, it doesn't increase their reliability if we just build a two hundred and thirty thousand volt line. The one fifteen KV system is, is what all the customers being fed off for power is being transformed. One fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen thousand volts comes into the high side of the transformer and then is distributed at lower voltages to the community. And that fifth system again will be overloaded in twenty eighteen. We would have to get a bunch of customers off of the one fifteen KV system is the reason for needing.
You can't then put them on the two thirty KV?
We can and that's the reason for picking the Pratt's. Pratt's has eighty eight hundred customers, it has a large number of customers and it also has a single feed, it has one radial feed to it. Like during the deratio storm that we had a couple of years ago, trees got into that line and took that line out, those customers were out. Rappahannock was not able to pick up all those customers during that time and so those customers were out of service. A second feed to that line would allow a better, a hardened, better reliability.
So the reliability is by getting another, a parallel line, not necessarily a parallel, but a, a second line to that.
Yes, and.
That's the reliability.
Yes, sir, you want it to come from a different location. If both of those lines were in the same right of way, one tree could still take out both lines, so you want it to come through a different path.
Any other questions?
What you're saying then is you, you have lines that come into the substation there and it's redistributed out across smaller.
And, and you're talking about Pratt's?
At Pratt's, yes.
Yes, Pratt's Substation right now is being fed at a hundred and fifteen thousand volts and it's being fed from the Gordonsville Substation on a line owned by First Energy to Pratt's, which is owned by Rappahannock Electric Co-op.
Right.
It used to be owned by First Energy before they gave up their distribution system in Virginia.
But I, I mean, if, if you're moving power in that way, you're moving power out through...
It goes out, it gets, when it goes and hits and becomes transformed, very similar to the way your cell phone gets charged at a DC voltage from a AC transformer in your home.
You're stepping down.
You're just stepping it down to a low, the lower distribution voltages, yes.
Right, but it's, at that point, where is it distributed through?
It's distributed through Rappahannock's Electric's Distribution System.
Going through a grid, but it's different lines and what?
Yes, sir, those lines feed, from my understanding, from Rappahannock, they feed six separate counties.
Okay, and what size lines are those?
Those lines are usually with Rappahannock are thirty four thousand and then they also step down their voltage on those. Once a line, once you get a certain distance out from the substation, you again will step that down sometimes to continue to drop that voltage to be able to go to the homes and, and it gets dropped again to two forty.
Okay, but my, my question was, you're, you're bringing it in on a hundred and fifteen?
Yes, sir.
But it's not transmitted back out anywhere on anything that size?
No, sir, no, sir, just one transmission line. It's called, we call it a radial line because it is a single feed, transmission feed to that substation.
Does two hundred and thirty kilovolts carry more capacity than hundred and fifteen?
Yes, sir, two hundred and thirty thousand volts has more.
So if you were to change the, on the existing line, change the, the voltage and the appropriate change in transformers, you could, you could meet the capacity requirements by just upgrading the existing lines?
The existing First Energy line?
Yes.
Yes. That we have no redundancy there?
Understand, understand.
Yes, sir, understand, yeah.
Now how often are you losing power due to trees on your, on your kilovolt lines?
I, it's, it's a First Energy line, I don't know their details as far as, and there's no one here from First Energy, I don't know how often that.
I mean, just how, I mean, these things sit a lot taller than the trees most of the times.
Yeah, I, I don't know the average height of the First Energy line, I would ask.
I don't know any of those.
It's probably about seventy feet in height, it's an eight, it's what we call an H-frame line, it's probably roughly sixty five to seventy feet in height. And I, I, only one I do know is that I was told that, that, that substation was out during the deratio storm, the July fourth storm a couple of years ago.
The existing line from going down to Gordonsville, at some point I had read something, I thought you were going to, you were proposing making some changes to that, but now it sounds like you're not.
Well, that line, the small, a smaller portion of that line is being rebuilt from Gordonsville to Somerset. Somerset's only about, I think it's roughly a mile north of there.
Right.
And it's for load issues at Somerset. And it's just a single rebuild from Gordonsville to Somerset of.
But it's within the existing right of way and?
It's within the existing right of way, yes, sir. And it's still a hundred and fifteen thousand volts.
Right.
It doesn't upgrade, so it's still overloading eventually the one fifteen thousand volt system.
But you're gonna, you're, my understanding was you're gonna replace the, the wooden structures with steel structures?
Light duty steel poles, they're a wood pole equivalent structure. They're made out of quarton steel, they have a rusted look to them. Eventually over time, they, they still look like wooden poles, but yeah, that, that's the upgrade there, it continues to be at a hundred and fifteen thousand volts.
Okay.
Just from Gordonsville to Somerset.
Mr. Chairman members of the board, I think some of the confusion is that these projects were noted, were, you know, communicated about the same time, but they're two different projects.
Yes.
And so First Energy's project from Gordonsville to Somerset was announced and communicated.
And actually that's a Dominion project.
Dominion project, as I see it, I'm confused.
That's okay, it's, it's easy to confuse.
They were two different projects that were communicated about the same time.
Yes, sir, and that's actually partly in Albemarle County and partly in Orange County.
But it's all relevant.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So the purple line now or violet?
Yeah, we actually have a purple line in there now and, and I will tell you that we have not put that on our website for the public to see. We, we, we have just come up with that and we brought it here tonight to show that we, we did take into consideration a lot of the information that we received from the public and we began to work on another way to get service, a, a new line to there by a lot of the information we received from the public.
But explain that line, where, where's the two thirty coming from?
The two thirty KV line, right now, the, the line from Remington, let's, you're, you can see it, let's say to the orange line, it's roughly eighteen miles from Remington to the top, top of that orange line. That orange line is eighteen and a half miles, it combines with the green line as it gets into Madison County and goes to Pratt's. So it's coming all the way from Remington Substation through several other substations, Brandy Delivery Point, which is an REC Substation. It goes right by the tap for the Culpeper line that taps over to Mountain Run Substation, which is right near the TerraMark Data Center and goes by Oak Green, which is, Oak Green Substation is right near the five twenty-two Mitchell Delivery Point area. There's also a substation called Mitchell Delivery Point there and then drops just south of there near where the existing line crosses the Rapidan River and then works its way over to the Pratt Substation, which is over on twenty-nine right in Madison, in the town of Madison.
Right.
Yes.
Peter, what, what new line are you referring to? You got the yellow line and the green line, which is the other line?
There's, there's actually a purple line in the center there that comes down and ties into the green line near some, some conservation easements there or s- I think, I can move back.
I don't see it on his map either.
Right hand side.
Can you see my cursor? Right, see that purple line that goes right through there and then ties in with the green line right there? And that, actually that purple line tying into the green line would not be in orange at all.
And, and the big change, it appears, is that the length for which there's no redundancy seems to grow. If, if, assuming you're not putting two lines in that, the rest of the way to the Pratt Substation.
Right, if you, if you take a look at the green line, that is probably the closest line between the existing line, which is in brown, and Pratt Substation. And originally that line was much straighter and we continued to put jogs and move in it so that we can try to move around and try to move our way over to the property lines on some parcels and to try and make sure we miss historic properties and, and everything that we've discovered in this discovery process with the open houses. And I will tell you, the open houses were on this project probably the best open houses I've ever had. The people in this area, the three counties, were just excellent to work with. I mean, people were upset and we're used to people being upset, but they, they understood the need, they just, as usual, and, and honestly, most anyone would be the same way, they, they really don't want the power line on their property. They, they've come here for the rule, character of this area and, but again, they, they worked with us and told us about things that were going on on their property, if they were getting ready to put it into a conservation easement or they were getting ready to, to do something on the property, told us about an old cemetery. One lady over near Pratt's told us about an old cemetery that's not on anyone's books and, and we need to make sure that we don't cross things like that or we can mark things out like that on our maps. So it was, it was excellent input from the community.
You, you've come up with this purple line, what are the percentages or the, that's the line you'd probably go with?
And, and we'll, we'll, we'll provide all of the routes that we come up with to the State Corporation Commission and I will build whatever line they deem and tell me is the line that I should, should build.
Okay, so it goes to the SCC is what you're actually determining.
And, and at that point, the community has another chance to go in with public testimony and discuss the, the problems they have with these lines and, and with these locations and what they would like the SCC to do with it.
Will, will there be another open forum before?
I, I had two open houses, we had, we had good communications with folks. I didn't plan on having Dominion having another open house. We, that was purposely the reason that I, and, and a lot of people complained about it originally upfront, but I think they did finally understand. I, I went ahead and sent information to everyone in that wedge from the green area all the way to the orange area. Everyone inside there got a letter from us telling us, telling them that we were looking at this area for a proposed transmission line. And to make sure that they didn't get confused that Dominion was trying to sell them power, we even sent a postcard later to make sure, it's something they didn't have to open, to make sure that they knew we were talking about building a transmission line, not having anything to do with their distribution power, but actually a transmission line, to make sure we got as much public input as possible.
All right. Does anybody else have any more questions or comments at this point? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next we have the Orange Madison Culpeper Alliance.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the board, friends and neighbors here tonight too. First, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me the time on your busy agenda to offer these opinions of a group of us called the Orange Madison Culpeper Alliance, which we've formed in response to Dominion's announcement of their project. First things first, some of you here may not know me, my name's Bob Wilbanks. When my wife and I were planning to leave a large city and search in the United States, high and low, for a place to raise our young family, we landed in Orange County, Virginia. At a long list of reasons we landed here, many of those reasons that we're here are the same reasons that many of you have been here for multiple generations. We add to the list of reasons on why we live here every day. We love it here, we appreciate it here, we thank y'all for sharing Virginia with us. My farm's located on Rapidan Road, just north of Petrenos Road. It's a touch over three hundred acres, it's got rolling hills, no use of specable black cattle, we've got riparian buffers along the creeks, there are fields with hundreds of newly planted hardwood trees. There's an antique bank barn there that we restored. We reconstructed a house there that looked like an old Virginia farmhouse. We look at making those expenditures as our contribution to the appearance of the countryside. After all, down at the end of my driveway, there's two signs, signs say Virginia scenic by the way on it. We wanted to look like Virginia. But between my farm and the historic district of Rapidan, almost every single large parcel of land is in conservation easement. If you look at Rusty's PowerPoint demonstration, he'll show you all of those things along the green line and sensitivity of that particular selection item in his project. Now, if we look within eyesight of those signs, he just showed us a proposal that's gonna change the view forever that I just described to you. It's gonna cut my farm up and shave the north third of it off and separate it from the rest of my farm potentially. And the hunt estate that I had planned to give to my daughter at my death on that north third of my farms forever destroyed unless I want my grandchildren raised under a two thirty KV transmission line. It's a valuable piece of property. There's other ways that they can do this, they haven't exhausted all the resources yet. The announcement of that purple line tonight hasn't been submitted to any single individual outside of, of a small handful and it's the first time it's been seen. We appreciate it doing it. The project described to do the same thing to scores of other farmers and landowners in a three county area, not just Orange. These people have been here for generations. To counter the sudden threat to our countryside, we formed an alliance with citizens from all three affected counties who were fairly organized and fairly energized to be only three weeks old. We're here tonight to ask the board supervisors for their support to produce the best outcome for the citizens of Orange County as well as our neighbors in Madison, Culpeper County. We agree, I think, electricity's a good thing. We don't dislike Dominion. Electricity heats and cools our homes, lights our offices, runs our computers, charges our cell phones, my cattle are held back tonight by a single piece of polywire with electricity running through it. We appreciate the reliability of Dominion, it's been pretty good since I've lived here. The Orange Madison Culpeper Alliance calls those concerns. We don't wanna make Dominion's life difficult. It's the goal of the alliance to find a balance between reliable energy and the preservation of our community's rural heritage and our open spaces. That said, and speaking on behalf of the group, it's our opinion that the closed study area and the routes that Dominion's presented doesn't preserve our rural heritage and our open places. Also, that said, it's our opinion that the manner in which Dominion introduced their planned attempt is reason for concern. We formed when in the opinion of several landowners that their planned attempt to introduce the project was done under the cloak of fragment in the community. They do this all over the Commonwealth. They come in, they announce a large study area, everybody shows up at the open houses, voices are buzzing, standing room only, and then suddenly everybody leaves except the people that are under the lines. Everybody wiping their cars, boy, it's hot on me. And the next thing you know, people are organizing the parking lot, how can we get it moved to Culpeper County and how can Culpeper County get it moved to Orange County? And while we're out here chasing our tails and burning up all of our resources fighting with each other, they're already permitted with the State Corporation Commission and some construction trucks are showing up. We need some time, gentlemen. Their rationale for the project is that the primary purpose is to provide local redundancy in our electric service and it's beginning in Pratt's due to its vulnerability being on the end of a single line. The alliance would like to ask Dominion, could it be our opinion, are we correct, are we hitting only part of the story or maybe there are bigger projects on your horizon? Could it have something to do with the grid reliability? Could it possibly be sale of electricity all the way to Loudoun County, gentlemen? Okay? Possibly even after the Pratt Substation's upgraded? Maybe they can extend the line out through the mountains to Sperryville? Maybe they can sell electricity to Pittsburgh? Okay? Ladies and gentlemen, in their opinion of the alliance, if they can have bigger plans, why would they have announced the Warrington Wheeler Line last week on the fourth page of the food section of the Washington Post? With a tiny little Remington Substation stuck right down here at the bottom of the map? Okay? We're about to give up our farmland and feed Loudoun County. It doesn't seem right to me. There are bigger plans out there, gentlemen. You know, I ask you today to look closely, look closely with the alliance and our group, look at the investigations of the press, join the citizens in Orange County in questioning that proposal. Please buy us a little bit of time. I'm thoughtful on an electrical consultant. We can get one hired, we've got an energized group of people, we've got the resources, we've got a law firm in Richmond that's dealt with this sort of thing before, have consultants there. Let's get a little bit of time, let's prove that it's needed. I'd like you to ask... I'd like you to ask yourselves, what's the actual need for this line? Is it reliability versus redundancy, as I've already said? Is it electricity going somewhere else? What's the significant impact of this proposal on our agriculture and historic resources, on our environment? Those three bald eagles that I saw eating a deer carcass in my front pasture right underneath where their lines crossed in Rapidan Road last winter? On the protection of property values, controversial health concerns, hundreds of larves out there about childhood leukemia associated with high voltage transmission lines. I want my grandchildren raised back there on that hunt estate underneath the two thirty. Tourism. Heard a lot about that earlier tonight. What you gonna do? I looked down the end of my driveway one day, and I saw a family set up a card table and have a picnic at the end of my driveway. Thought, man, I get in a utility vehicle and drive down there. It's a family from England. They opened up a card table, and they were having a picnic in front of those scenic byway signs. I started talking to them about cattle and farming, what we do in this part of the country, and they were ready to invite me to England before the battle. That great time there. Would they have stopped there if there'd have been a two thirty line going straight overhead? I don't know. Would they have even been on the road? I don't know the answer to that either. Need to ask ourselves why PJM, who Rusty said, the regional transmission authority, received bids from two different electric companies who compete with Dominion for the project, and they chose Dominion over those two companies. Two companies were Northeastern Electric and ITC. They had proposals to improve the substation in Pratt's and the reliability. Neither one of them involved constructing the new line across miles of virgin farmland. Ask ourselves, you know, are we getting the whole story, or are we just getting a segment of you? I've understood from a number of sources that Dominion is mandated in the Commonwealth to receive an eight percent return on all their investments in infrastructure, paid for by radiates. Do we really need this project, or is it possible it could just be an investment by Dominion that we're gonna all pay for eventually? While we're getting answers to these questions as leaders of the citizens of Orange County, I very respectfully ask you, gentlemen, on behalf of the OMC Alliance to help us. Counties were granted the power in two thousand seven. Uh, Virginia statute fifteen point two, 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 three, section eight, to designate specific corridors or routes for electric transmission lines of a hundred and fifty KV or more. I ask you, gentlemen, to consider a resolution and act quickly. Modify our master plan. Keep this from happening again down the road. Pass a resolution. Amend our master plan now. Tell them where they can put those lines. Give us time to find other places to put them, or let them propose other places to put them, or other ways to solve the problem. Your support and decisive action will send a real loud message to Dominion. It will also send a message to politicians up the ladder. There's other ways to accomplish these goals of improving grid reliability without taking away virgin farmland. I've taken away too much time here tonight. There's probably some concerned people later on tonight. Got something to say, questions to ask, and as you do, I tell you, please be brief with these gentlemen. They've got other things to do tonight. But I do thank you for your time, and I really thank you for your consideration, and I thank you on behalf of our group.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very well.
Information sources in that article came from an attorney who's a landowner in Madison, who has an assistant in Charlottesville. His name's Jim Alexander. Her name's Cynthia Chumley. They poured through hundreds of pages of documents, pulled that information out. That wasn't pulled out of the air. Okay?
Thank you. All right, next item is the Orange County Tourism Economic Analysis. Dr. Margit Peggnum, Matt Gumm.
As Dr. Mangu makes his way, gentlemen, as you know, the Tourism Advisory Committee came to the board back in, in the fall, actually last summer, uh, asking, uh, the board's support in pursuing, uh, an analysis. I guess, uh, gives some empirical weight, uh, to, I think, what everybody intuitively knows that tourism is a, is a vital part of the county's economy. Mr. Mangu constructed, uh, this analysis for the Tourism Advisory Committee, and it had a confidential survey, which he'll give you the results of that. This effort will dovetail into the advisory committees and Lee Moyer, our tourism manager's effort to develop a strategic plan for tourism, uh, much like economic development strategic, strategic plan that's currently underway by the Economic Development Authority. So with that as kind of a preamble, I'll turn it over to Fletcher.
I think you just took longer than you gave me to make the presentation.
I wanna set the table for you.
I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Fletcher Magum, and I'm the president of Magum Economics, a Richmond-based consulting firm. My firm was contracted by the county to produce an assessment of the fiscal and economic contribution that tourism makes to Orange County. And I believe that that full study has been made available to you. I've been asked tonight to very briefly touch on some of the high points and share this with you, and I'll do that now. One of the first things that we do in these analyses is take a look at the overall local economy. And the reason for that is to ascertain how, what it is we're looking at kind of fits into the overall picture to give you some context to that. When we look at Orange County's economy, we, we see several interesting things. One of them is the general economy, or generally, the economy outperformed, outperformed that of Virginia as a whole during the recovery. But there are aspects of vulnerability. One of them is a very heavy dependency on the manufacturing sector, which is very typical of rural communities. And also, almost three out of every five unemployed individuals in Orange County has only a high school education or less. And also, the age cohorts tend to be in the forty-four, forty-five age category and above. This is a graph that shows year-over-year change in total employment in Orange County for the period from the second quarter of two thousand nine through the second quarter of two thousand and fourteen. So it covers the, the, really, the, the, the bottom point of the recession and through the recovery. And any observation above the zero line in this graph is a positive increase in employment. Any observation below the zero graph is a negative change, year-over-year change in employment. The orange line or Magenta line that you see in front of you is Orange County. This is the same line for Virginia. And what this shows you is that Orange County was harder hit during the recession. That orange line is below the, or the, the Magenta line is below the orange line from two thousand and nine through about second quarter of two thousand and ten. You came out of the recession about the same time as the state as a whole, and you've actually outperformed the state as a whole throughout most of the recovery, fairly substantially, actually. This unemployment rate from two, December of two thousand nine through December of two thousand and fourteen, again, the Magenta line is Orange County. The orange line is Virginia. As you can see, the unemployment rates in Orange County were about two percent, or two percentage points higher than the state as a whole in the beginning of the recession or the, the, the bottom of the recession, uh, two thousand and nine. Those lines have converged, and as of the most recent observation that we have, unemployment rate in Orange County was four point eight percent relative to four point five percent for the state as a whole. So, I mean, you, you, you trended down to exactly where the state is overall. If we look at the characteristics of the un, or I'm sorry, if we look at manufacturing, uh, one of the interesting things about Orange County, again, it's very typical of rural communities, is very heavily dependent on the manufacturing sector. Manufacturing accounts for fourteen point six percent of private employment in Orange County. The statewide number is seven point eight percent, so twice as dependent on manufacturing as is typical for the state as a whole. Manufacturing accounts for almost one out of seven private sector jobs in Orange County. It also is the fifth highest paying private industry sector within the county, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars a week. It also posted the third largest employment range of the last, or most recent four quarters with an increase of sixty-seven jobs between the second quarter of two thousand and thirteen and second quarter of two thousand and fourteen. Look at some of the characteristics of the unemployed, again, it gets back to what I talked about before. Uh, fifty-three percent of those unemployed or taking unemployment insurance in Orange County are above the age of forty-five. If we look at educational attainment for that same group, sixty percent of those individuals have either a high school education or less. Tourism can be particularly beneficial to rural communities. Uh, typically or often, rural communities have a lack of economic diversity. And tourism can help in solving that by balancing that portfolio in other economic areas, other economic sectors. And that's particularly true, again, because rural communities tend to be very heavy, heavily dependent on manufacturing. Uh, rural communities also typically have a lower educational attainment level, and that's because the economic base in the past really did not require advanced degrees. So those that had advanced degrees ended up having to leave for the most part. There's typically an outmigration of young adults in rural communities. Uh, also limited opportunity, economic opportunities. Tourism can help address some of those issues, or increasing the size of the tourism sector can help address some of those issues. The first is through increasing jobs directly. I mean, tourism hires a lot of people. We talked about, or we heard earlier this evening about how next week will be Tourism and Travel Week, and the overall numbers for the state of Virginia and Orange County in that regard. Tourism is very big business in Virginia. It's also big business in Orange County. It also helps by creating greater economic diversity, as we talked about before. Another economic sector to kind of balance out the portfolio. In the same way that you want your investments balanced over a host of different categories, you want the same thing with economic sectors within the locality for exactly the same reason. Because that way, if something goes south, it doesn't have an adverse, a large adverse impact on the overall portfolio. Also takes advantage of existing rural and agricultural assets. A lot of the comments that we received in the survey that we did talked about using tourism to, to sell, uh, the rural and agricultural components of Virginia through agric, or of Orange County through agri-tourism, and particularly reaching out to urban areas like northern Virginia DC in that regard. It also generates new business opportunities for local businesses that are either part of the tourism industry's supply chain or have complementary services. Janitorial supply companies, restaurant supply companies are part of that tourism supply chain. Gas stations offer complementary services, so it's expanding the overall economy. One of the things that we hear in when we do workforce, um, focus groups across the state is that the issue of soft skills, that new workers, particularly younger workers, do not have adequate soft skills. They really don't know what it means to be in a job or respond appropriately in a job. And one of the things that we find is there are certain industries that have traditionally been a school for those type of skills. Tourism is definitely one of those. It's one of those areas where younger individuals get a first job. Learn how, they have to report to work. They have to do what they're supposed to do. They learn customer relation skills and that type of thing. So it's a feeder, actually, for other occupations and other industries. It also aids in developing local industry clusters by fostering mutually beneficial economic connections between local businesses. And one of the things that we got back from the survey were a lot of relatively inexpensive suggestions in terms of how businesses can refer tourists or refer economic activity to one another. Uh, and a host of different things that were really fairly, I think, innovative in what was suggested. And how we went about this, there were two components of the analysis. One of them was a web-based survey. In that survey, your Tourism Advisory Council identified a hundred and seventy-seven local businesses that were contacted and asked to participate in that web survey. Of that number, fifty-four responded for a response rate of thirty point five percent. And typically, we're very happy when we see a twenty percent response rate, so this was very high. And as a result, I think, or it is a result of the work that your Tourism Advisory Committee did in soliciting responses and going back to people who not responded and encouraging them to do so. So this is a very high response rate, and we're very happy with it. From that analysis, we got information on the types of advertising that these people use. And, but most important, from our perspective, we got information on their connection to the tourism industry. When the Virginia Tourism Corporation does this analysis, what they do is take a statewide model, and then they do a drill down from that to localities. So it's very generic in its approach. It also has a very narrow list of industries that they're looking at in terms of tourism. What we were able to do with this was look at a much broader list of industries, including the restaurant industry, that type of thing. But through the information we got back from the survey, we were able to identify and quantify the magnitude of their connection to tourism. So we were able to weed out, or, again, only attribute to that industry, uh, that activity was, that was specifically linked to tourism, which was a big help in terms of our analysis. We used that information along with data on employment, uh, that's, that is called Full Disclosure ES two oh two data, which gives us full information on employment by industry within the county. It's been extrapolated. And ran that through IMPLAN, which is a simulation model that identifies the overall economic impact that any type of event has within a locality. Again, the study here for, for this study was Orange County specifically. What the IMPLAN model does really is identify for us what those spillover effects were. And what I mean by that is if I go to a restaurant and I spend a dollar, fifty cents of that goes to labor. That, that money is, goes into the pocket of those workers. They in turn spend it. And some portion of that stays in the economy. And as a result of these ripple effects, that one dollar that I spend generates much more than one dollar in terms of overall income. That's the multiplier effect. And what the IMPLAN model does is allow us to quantify precisely what that multiplier effect is. What that analysis showed was that in two thousand and thirteen, tourism directly contributed six hundred and sixteen jobs to Orange County. And these numbers are a little bit higher than what the Virginia Tourism Corporation found, and their analysis was five hundred and fifty-seven jobs. But again, the reason for that is that we were able to use Orange County-specific information, which the Virginia Tourism Corporation is really not in a position to do. And through the survey, we had very detailed information on the direct connection of various industries to the tourism industry. We were able to use that information as part of our analysis. It also showed that the direct impact was seventeen point five million dollars in labor income. Overall economic impact, again, the sum of those ripple effects from a direct perspective, was fifty-six point one million dollars in local economic output. Now, again, these numbers are somewhat higher than the Virginia Tourism Corporation has found. If we take into account those ripple effects, again, what the IMPLAN model allows us to do, those numbers grow to seven hundred and ninety-six full-time positions in the county. Twenty-four point one million dollars in labor income, and eighty-one point five million dollars in economic output.
I got some question here now.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking, you're looking at an economic multiplier of somewhere about one point three.
Correct.
I just read a, uh, a proclamation here. And if I'm looking at the proclamation on a national basis, it's more like, oh, maybe a two point five.
Right. The reason for that is the smaller geography for the study area, and again, we were just looking at Orange County, the smaller the, the multipliers. And if you think about it, what happens is that multiplier captures the circular effect.
We're losing a lot of that initial.
The dollars go outside of.
A lot more of it going outside the county?
Exactly. And the smaller the geographic area, the more of that is the case. So if you're looking at a national model, then it's almost all self-contained.
It's all self-contained.
If you're looking at the state.
In a state, it might, but at a local, there's leakage.
A lot of leakage.
Okay.
Which is why that number is much smaller. And again, these were a very precise estimate. It was made to be very precise.
That's, okay, go ahead.
Uh, to put, place these numbers in proportion, what that means is that tourism accounts for, again, in overall numbers, twelve percent of overall employment within the county in two thousand and thirteen. Moreover, this economic activity generated five point nine million dollars in additional state and local revenue, six point seven million additional federal tax revenue, again, higher than the Virginia Tourism Corporation number slightly. When we look at those numbers and working with your own revenue department, what we find is that approximately two point eight million of that is comprised of local tax revenue that's collected by Orange County.
Does that include, uh, real estate taxes?
That is mostly real estate taxes.
Okay.
And a one percent local sales tax.
Okay.
And that's it.
I had one question, uh, that you had on figure six of your, of your report, page eight. And it's looking at the local quotient for private employment. And it looks like everything is better than the state average. Is this Lake Wobbe gone or something?
Uh, no, it certainly isn't. There are, if you look at those numbers, what happens is that there are twenty major industry sectors. Uh, I think if you actually look at it, what you'll find is a one means that it's the same as the state, not above the state.
That's what I'm saying. I would think that there are some that are actually less than the state.
Right, and construction is the same as the state, accommodation and food service is the same as the state, administration and support and waste management below, transportation and warehousing below, healthcare and social assistance below, finance and insurance below.
Okay, so, all right, I'm just looking at the scale, all right. I would have thought, though, that some of these, okay, all right.
The ones that are above.
That's fine, that's fine.
Are agriculture, which, again, are, is very obvious.
All right, I was looking the scale wrong. Thank you.
Any other questions?
In your, either in your modeling effort or survey information, were you able to separate, and let me use wineries just as an example. If, if I read this correctly, you attributed their entire employment to tourism, it appears. Clearly, there, there are several elements there, or were you able to se- separate the?
No, they were separated out. With all of them, what we asked was that, how much of your business actually comes from tourism? None of them were a hundred percent. I mean, wineries were fairly high if I recall correctly, but it was not a hundred percent.
But when you, in terms of revenue, yes, but in terms of employment, I couldn't, I couldn't track whether there was a, uh, an analysis of the employees. I mean, the, the, the survey results, as I recall, you only were showing a handful of employees, like six or eight or something like that. It was a very small number, three.
Right. The issue there, I suspect, is that, again, what we did was use the information from the survey, which is a sample. It's not the entire economic base of the county. So the total employment figures that you see there are for those that responded, or the aggregate of those that responded. We then take that information in terms of the percentage of their business that comes from tourism and apply that to the unrestricted ES two oh two data. from tourism and apply that to the unrestricted ES 202 data, which is for the county as a whole. And it's extrapolated, but it's for the county as a whole. So those employment numbers, again, they account for the fact that, and I forget exactly what the percentage was for wineries, I think it was eighty, eighty-three percent somewhere in that neighborhood, it was fairly high, not a hundred. And then we apply that number both to employment and to revenue for the sector as a whole within the county, based on the data that's available from the Virginia Employment Commission. So those, you're talking about, you're looking at the employment numbers from a sample, we then take that number and project it onto the estimated employment numbers for the county as a whole, for that sector.
Yeah, a couple of those, maybe, another one that caught my eye, retail stores, motor vehicle parts, I mean, okay.
Very low percentage. If I recall correctly, it was a neighborhood twenty-three percent that they attributed to tourism.
But, but you have a substantial number of employees. I mean, there's, by the time you do the total induced as well as the direct impact, you're talking about thirty employees. That's, that's a lot in that very small slice.
Typically, retail trade is the second largest sector within a locality. So yes, it is a large number of employees. Very small overall impact in terms of tourism for a small proportion.
That was just the motor vehicle, that was just the motor vehicle piece, not total retail.
But those numbers were based on the responses that we got back from the survey.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fletcher. Chairman and members of the board, I know Jay Billy's here, he's chair of the Tourism Advisory Committee. We're going to arrange for Dr. Mangum to also give a similar presentation to that group, and then from that, start working on a strategic plan for the county that ultimately will come before this board for input and discussion.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comment. Have anybody signed up for public comment?
Not currently, I haven't received any.
Okay. Let's move on to Department Director Constitutional Office reports. First one is Economic Development Quarterly Report, Tommy Miller.
Good evening Chairman, order supervisors. So in your pockets today, this is my second quarterly report to present to everybody, and what I have here is your standard unemployment numbers, what we've seen, again, very low unemployment numbers, which is great for those seeking employment. It's a very great time if you're a job seeker. However, it's a little tough for our employers out there to find just the best bit of personnel that they're looking for right now. And then our numbers at the workforce center have stayed pretty steady, hovering around the two hundred mark. And prospect activity has also been pretty steady, had three site visits in the last quarter. But looking at overall activity, just gonna give you a generalization of some of the items we've been working on over the last three months. Again, we've managed numerous prospect acquirers, both new and existing. And last time I mentioned, we were working on our strategic plan, and I did a kind of aggressive outreach to numerous stakeholders in the community, and finally completed all of the information gathering I was looking for there, and we're in the process of going through that spreadsheet of information and then developing our next steps for a plan. Was able to tour the former Perrigo properties and speak with both Perrigo's management and PBM on a little bit more of Perrigo will be officially out of their lease at the end of this month, and then PBM will be sending in more of their folks to look at what improvements they want to make to those buildings and further create their strategy for marketing the properties. However, since Perrigo's been gone out for a month, I haven't had the chance to show a couple of the properties to, to potential interested parties. Green Applications is ramping up their efforts, they're hovering around sixty employees right now, six lines, they're running three shifts, and right now, I'm working close with them on their workforce efforts, on their hiring strategy. Some other notes here, you're aware Senator Kane came in to visit, we helped organize his agenda there and get as much community input in front of him as possible, let him tour the Silk Mill Building, a few businesses there, which I kind of look at as kind of our local incubator, we have a lot of local small startups that are out there, and put them in front of a range of some long-term existing businesses and some startups out there. And then the GWAP was approved by our EDA board at the last meeting, ready to move forward through obviously the Planning Commission and hopefully up to the board. And we have attended enterprise zone workshops, had some meetings with Town and the Town of Orange, Town of Gordonsville, and we're gonna start formalizing some of our incentives and our argument to have a enterprise zone stay here, not just in the Town of Orange, but throughout certain portions of the county. And last, but not least, is we conducted our first AFID grant working group assessment and generated some initial working ideas for the Montpelier and moving forward with that. And that concludes my quarterly report, if you all have any questions.
I noticed that the Orange Downtown Alliance and the Chamber are putting in their newsletters, available spaces. I hadn't noticed that before.
I think the, I think the ODA has been doing that.
They've been doing that for years.
But I was not aware of the Chamber though, that's good.
Also in our packet for this meeting was the quarterly report from the Central Virginia Regional Partnership, and I couldn't help but notice that in their quarterly report from January through the end of March of this year, that the, all of the announcements that they listed, of which there's a dozen, let's say, totaling about three hundred, a little over three hundred jobs, they were all in Alamoora County or Charlottesville. None of the outlying counties. I, I just point that out as, you know, it, we're clearly, we said for a long time, we're in a competition with our neighbors for jobs and projects and investment, and clearly there's a competition underway.
I hope to skew those numbers in the future.
Yeah, I didn't mean, as I say, that was just an observation because the data happened to show up at the same-
Time you did.
Same time you did.
One thing on supplement Tom, Tommy's report, we will be coming to you all, I think in the June timeframe, to get, brief you all in some direction on our application for enterprise zone renewal, because that's an August deadline, if I recall, and there'll be coordinating with the two town councils and the board being the applicant, we're gonna make sure all the governor, elected leadership are comfortable with what's being put forward. So I think we'll be ready in the end of June, one of those June board work sessions, or early July.
We may, we may speed that up a little bit, but yes.
Even better news.
Right. So in a work session here in the near future, we hope to have kind of what we're gonna be putting on the table for our application, and where those zone boundaries will be, and what kind of incentives we'll be looking to coordinate both with the county and the towns.
Okay, any more questions for Tommy? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Orange Youth Sports Foundation Funding Request.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've come to you tonight on behalf of Orange Youth Sports Foundation with a request for some help at Boosta Park. OISF has an agreement to run the park for the county and runs the sports out of there. They're requesting to trade their older, larger tractor in for the Flex fifteen-foot Flexwing in for a smaller, newer version, a twelve-foot version that better works with their tractor. Their second request is for a York rake, which is a piece of equipment that goes in the back of the tractor to drag the infield. And the third request is for a zero turn, an additional zero-turn mower. They have volunteers from baseball and soccer that will help mow those facilities, and they can take care of the bigger part. Mr. Ailer, President, Alan Ailer, President of OISF, is here to answer any of your questions.
I actually have a question. You're looking at purchasing the used diesel Kubota, is that correct?
Yes.
I have a little concern about that due, one, the hours on it, your purchase, two thousand hours on it. The other is, I have heard numerous, even from the dealers, that the diesel zero turns tend not to perform. Have you had any concern, feedback, have the dealer said anything to you about that?
Um, no, not really. I mean, it's the, any diesel engine should, I'd last a gas motor. The-
It's not a matter about lasting, but my concern is that you'll end up with this and have performance issues and come before us next year saying this-
Well naturally, I would love to have another one like you got last year, but I'm trying to-
Right, no, I understand. It just, I have a concern because I know a few people have purchased them, and they're just, they're not happy with the diesel engines.
I haven't heard that. I've been in, well, I used to sell Kubotas for quite a few years, so I've been in that industry too. I have never had any issues with them. Like I said, naturally, I would love to have a brand-new one, like we got last year, but that was, what, thirteen thousand dollars. I know this mower is not gonna, it lasts as long as the one we have now, but I'm trying to limit the time that we're spending on one mower cutting that hours in half by adding a second mower. I think we put probably right at sixty hours on that mower last year. I don't know how many we put on the tractor. The tractor, we couldn't use quite as much just because the grass grew so fast last year, and it's doing the same thing this year, that fifteen-foot mower is just too much for a fifty horsepower tractor. I had gotten prices to trade that mower in to get a new twelve-foot one, and I thought the quotes come back very generous from two of the, two of the dealers. As far as the zero turn, I'm not set in stone on that particular zero turn, but I'd like to keep the dollar amount in that area for a used zero turn, whether it's a gas one with less mile, hours on it, or a, another diesel one that has less hours, but I was trying to keep it within that, that range.
On the zero turn, is the dealer offering any, any kind of warranty or?
No, I, in the past, I've worked with Piedmont Power on some of the equipment that we've gotten, and they've been very good about when something breaks, I mean, something broke on the tractor the other day, they charged me a thing, all I did was pay for a few parts, he went down there, spent probably four, six hours working on it, and he's been very, very generous on stuff like that. Now, whether that continues to like this, I don't know, but I'm, they're usually very good to work with.
Any other questions, comments? Request for eighty-three hundred and fifty dollars. Do I have a motion on this?
Removed.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Do have a little, it would be nice to see if they would offer some sort of maintenance package on that, just, just because of the hours on it and the concerns is something I'd like to see, so that-
Or, or at least, at least a modest period of time, I mean, you know, thirty, forty-five days would not be unusual. I mean, I have, I have a, actually, I think mine is the next side, this is a twenty-one, and I have a twenty-three diesel that gets a brutal workout, and so far-
This has a smaller deck on it than a lot of them too, so it should, you know, it's a sixty-inch deck where you can get a seventy-two on these, and I know you probably do have some performance issues when you get to a seventy-two inch deck and a twenty-one horsepower.
Okay, so this is a sixty, it is.
It should be, it should be a horsepower problem.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Next is the Water Resources Plan.
I see it's six oh two, so I need to be brief, and fortunately, I can be. I will say that it's taking a lot of hours, this is a document, I'm a little old-school and have a hard time reviewing documents this big on the computer, so I printed it off. I've had multiple conversations with our consultant, Riley Wilson, also had correspondence with RSA, with Dudley, and I spoke to Lynn Clements as late as four o'clock today. The bottom line is, we are all in agreement that there's nothing in this document that we feel is necessary for the Orange County to comment on in this open comment period that DEQ's advertising that closes on May eighth. There are a few things that we need to keep in mind on the horizon as this, as this draft plan becomes formal and moves forward. Nothing that's earth-shattering. I will just say that one of the biggest things is, in this document, DEQ is recommending that they expand or in some cases, create newly groundwater and surface water service districts or management areas. That could be a benefit to Orange County or that could be a hindrance, it remains to be seen as time goes on. It could possibly be an aid to us in the fact that we show in our water supply plan a future deficit, and one or two of our neighbors may not have a deficit, may even actually have a surplus, and if these districts are created, that could possibly create a situation where DEQ can put pressure on folks with surplus to supply to those nearby that have deficits. Another way to look at that is, it could put a cap on what we're allowed to withdraw from surface water. Again, there's no way at this point in time to know until this all kind of takes form and moves forward.
Those districts multi-jurisdictional?
Yes, they would likely be. If, if a groundwater district is created, DEQ also says in this document that they would like a fairly substantial inventory of monitoring wells, so that may impact us if we start down the path of exploring groundwater sources, especially along Route fifteen. It may add some additional cost to us if the state's not gonna add some skin in the game, so to speak, if they want these monitoring wells and we have to pay for it, that's an additional cost.
It's maybe if you're trying to avoid the problems they're having out west if they're losing the water tables.
Well, yes. One other thing I'll say that jumps out, really jumped out to me when I was reviewing this document is DEQ states that eighty-two percent of the surface water that was withdrawn in 2013 is outside of permanent issuance, which means that these are grandfathered systems. Eighty-two percent's pretty substantial. What it doesn't say in this document, that I'd be interested to find out, is what kind of quantity are we talking about with eighty-two percent? Certainly, DEQ has to have some idea of the volume of water because hell, hell can model the state without that information, but-
We're thinking of such things as a multiplicity of private wells and-
This is surface water.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's paper mills and, and large industrial-
Yeah, that's been around a long time, it's grandfathered.
Power plants.
It falls outside of the current regulations, there's, the problem, the problem that DEQ faces in that particular instance is they, since they are grandfathered and outside of permanent constraints- is they, since they are grandfathered and outside of permanent, um, constraints, uh, even during droughts, those folks are pulling as much water as they feel they need to pull. Um, and that's one of the biggest things that DEQ's not, gotta get their arms around.
Sounds like the generals-
And a couple of the others are, are the, the, the King Grant stuff. Um, Minsburg, City of Richmond, who both claimed, owned the river and followed their own rules. I don't know if DEQ's gonna wanna tackle that or not, but, um, so, so there's certainly some challenges in this for the state.
I had occasion to read a few of the sections in there, and it's, it's an example of the twenty-eighty rule, where they're gonna regulate twenty percent and unregulate the eighty as opposed to the other way around.
Sounds to be familiar with that.
And that's, that's where we are. I could not find out, has there been any discussion about updates? Uh, I mean, our data in there now is what, two thousand and six or so?
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven?
We, we're mandated to update our, our supply plan in twenty eighteen.
Okay, so that was my question. Do we have a date to this point?
Yes, and I have provided some, some funds in the CIP to pay for that review because it's not gonna be terribly cheap. Um, and then in twenty twenty-three, then we'll have to rewrite it, uh, which would be an even bigger endeavor, but.
Just one other thing is Kurt and, and everyone went through this review. I know Chairman Pray and Mr. White, uh, and the Steering Committee is working on maybe getting our arms around, uh, our master utility plan that would presumptively come out of the adoption of the German and Wilder's Harry Plan. This plan will certainly inform that county's, uh, county's process in developing a, a master utility plan. And so the, the two are pretty concurrent, pretty tied, because whatever water resources we'll be looking at to meet the future economic development needs, particularly to the eastern, uh, end of the county, are going to be very much governed by the, the State Water Resources Plan.
But, but again, the, the, I guess the best news is there's nothing in here that any of us feel um, deviates from our water supply plan, the information we submitted. Uh, we don't really see anything in here that's harmful to Orange County, but I'm just, some things that-
Do you see anything there that could constrain us in the future?
Um, with, withdrawals, um, could become constrained, uh, depending on how this final document shakes out. But that's, it's a ways down the road before we'll know that. Um, so, some of the, some of the, uh, processes that DEQ is talking about using in this document to regulate or mandate the, the flow by of the withdrawals, um, in the river, uh, could, could lessen our ability to withdraw water in the future and especially during drought conditions. Another good thing that's in this document is DEQ recognizes the need for additional storage. Um, so I think that will aid us when we start looking at areas to, to build a reservoir. And so there's some, there's some positive things in here.
Any questions for Kurt? Thanks Kurt.
Thank you.
All right, can we get you?
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. One matter concerning the salary and performance of specific personnel in consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to Sections two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, eight one, and eight seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is here to authorize discussion of the four said matters in closed meeting.
And a motion?
They'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting?
Roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Frain?
Aye. Okay. Now. All right. We will start with the, uh, public hearings, uh, opposed men to the zoning ordinance seventy dash seventy-one.
This is Kurt showed me this. I loved it. Uh, members of the board, seventy dash seventy-one of the zoning ordinance is our, essentially our enabling legislation that allows us to grant what are called administrative variances. Uh, the counties have this for some time now. Um, I am proposing that we repeal this section. What I've discovered since I've been here is this has not been very well administered in the past. Um, it's also introduced a lot of ambiguity to how we approve variances. Um, so part of my proposal is to remove these, and this would essentially mean that all variances in the future would go before the BZA and not the zoning administrator. Uh, the Planning Commission heard this on March nineteenth and has recommended approval as presented. I can entertain any questions.
When you do a public hearing process before the BZA, does the applicant have to pay for announcements and stuff?
They do. That was part of the last, um, I think it was in two thousand and twelve when the fee schedule was amended. That's when that was included in there.
I also understand under the current system, if, if they apply for an administrative variance from Josh and he denies it, they still go to the BZA. So all this is, is another layer in the variance process. It isn't-
Unless he were to approve it.
If he were to approve it, and theoretically, I could ask you if I could go to the BZA to appeal it if I didn't like his approval, which also creates sort of a-
Really?
Yeah. So it sort of creates-
So, so-
And that's why most jurisdictions don't do the administrative variances.
So, so what you're saying is the next door neighbor could appeal it to the BZA?
Could as well, if the next door neighbor felt like anybody-
Okay.
So, the administrative variances puts a pressure on Josh that we kind of both felt like didn't make a lot of sense because they, everybody still has a right to go to the BZA. And so why not just make him go to BZA to start with?
So if he denies it, they go to the BZA to get it approved? If he approves it, somebody else can go and say-
Any interested party can go to BZA to fight if he denied.
Okay, all right.
Well, I must say, I'd never liked the term administrative variance. I mean, if, if it's gonna be a, a variance from one of our zoning provisions is, is a serious thing, and it shouldn't be treated administratively. Was, was my reaction when I first saw this.
That was by, my same premise in asking to get this repealed is basically the same thing.
Okay. Any further questions for Josh? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one is, uh, changes to Sections seventy dash two forty-one through two forty-four.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, this is a little more involved than amendment. By this particular section, there is, um, some enabling legislation and some, um, providing legislation in state code for non-conformities or grandfathering, as they're otherwise called. Um, the particular section we have currently in the ordinance was adopted in ninety-six as part of a major ordinance rewrite. It's not been touched or reviewed since then. Um, the state code, however, has had some amendments and some changes. So, the language you have before you addresses state code revisions or it addresses how we administer non-conformities as a staff, from a staff perspective?
Now, when we talk about non-conforming, you're talking about those that were at one point conforming to the law, and then the law was changed to make them non-conforming.
Correct.
So if somebody were to build something, uh, that didn't conform in the first place, he wouldn't be protected by this provision.
That would be considered a legal or an unlawful non-conformity?
Just, just make sure.
The, the other non-conformity existed because prior to nineteen sixty-seven, there was no zoning ordinance at all. And there was lots of things sitting around prior to that. I, I had a question, uh, on, uh, this, the last section, Section seventy-two forty-two, uh, on that, uh, page three of five, that deals specifically with, with the non-conforming lots as opposed to structures and uses. When I first read that, it seemed to me that we were broadening the ability for people to use or develop a new use for a non-conforming lot, and I don't think that was our intent. And I, I just, uh, because it says that e- except for size and frontage, you can do anything you can do in the underlying zoning by right. And it, it caused me to think that the, the words that says, that has a timeframe, a lot that exists at the time this is adopted, was an important aspect of that. Uh, and that, uh, be- because we wanted this to be a, a grandfathering, not create any possible ability to build something on a newly, uh, nu- a, a new structure on a non-conforming lot. And this looked to me like it, it allowed for that. And I didn't think that's what we wanted to do. I, I, I would, I would think we wanna make it tighter, not looser, uh, or at least as tight as it was, which says if it's already built on a non-conforming lot, it, it can stay. But if you have the situation that, you know, where minimum lot size is two acres in ag, if somebody has a one acre piece, wants to build a house, we've, we've had these discussions before, uh, that language appears to me could allow them to do it, or at least give them a case to argue that they could do it. I mean, I, I don't mean to be-
No, I agree.
Trying to-
That, the comma from the word except to the word regulations would, would give people some ability to do things within existing non-
Or at least make the argument. I mean, I, I don't know.
Well, I, I think it, the way it's written does say that, that if you've got a non-conforming lot, that as long as you meet all the other regs, we'll let you slide on the-
Even if it's a half an acre, because it says but for size and frontage, or area and, and front- I, I ju- I really raise that for-
Was that what the law intended?
Clarifying discussion. I don't know.
Well, but would, would, wouldn't the setbacks get to on that? All you're talking about is, is actual area and, and you're talking about frontage of the lot?
Right.
It says area and frontage, so-
Yeah, but you still have setback.
Yeah, this is one of those things that's, um, it's just how our department has administered these, um, just as a procedural matter. Um, basically, if you have a lot and it's zoned agricultural, you can, um, conduct any of the permitted uses and ag zoning on that property. Um, the, uh, with the caveat that you still have to comply with setbacks. So in some places, that's not a big issue. Um, on some lots, for example, south of the town of Orange, it's a big issue. Um, but this was just to, um, more or less enact how we, we currently administer them.
So back to, uh, uh, Jim's question, if somebody's got a one acre lot, would allow them to build a, uh, uh, put a house on it?
Correct.
So even though other places we-
You're not gonna get it because number one, you gotta have two drain fields. Primary and secondary, you'll never fit that on one acre, along with trying to put the water on there. With just one, one septic and, and water, yes. But with two of them, you're never gonna, you're never gonna meet the requirements for what they have for the size of your-
So that's independent of the, uh, of the zoning ordinance, comes down to health.
Yeah. You know, you never get the plan approved. Unless the BZA lets you have some.
Theoretically, you could put in some kind of, um-
Alternative system. Yeah, I mean, there's a possibility, but you still require a redundant lo- location, so. I don't, I don't know what the requirements would be. That would be the health department people to- But I think it would greatly limit anything you could do.
Well, is there any interest in changing the words there?
I didn't get to the point of having a suggested change other than, uh-
I think that, I think the setbacks and the other issues take care of it. You might find a lot somewhere that somebody might could pull something out, but I don't think it's anything of any grand consequence.
Well, we have, we have a number of, uh, residences that, that are on one acre lots right now.
Or less.
Me, and, and they're zoned ag, but, but they've been there for many, many, many years, so it's, it, it-
Zach owns one of them.
Yeah, well, that's right. In that area, there's a lot of them, as I say. I, I guess what concerned me is that, uh, we, we seem to be, uh, setting up a contradiction within our ordinance. In other places, just take the simple example, in ag, there's a minimum of a two acre lot size. This seems to say, but we didn't really mean it to be two acres because, you know, it can be any, any size as long as you meet everything but the size and the frontage.
Now, this only applies to existing lots, so you can't create a non-conforming lot, so this would only apply to existing non-conforming lots.
But it didn't say that. It says any non-conforming lot may be used. That's why I said before, it, it takes out the grandfathering in, uh, language. That's what caught my attention.
If the lot is, if the, the lot is already non-conforming, what you're saying is there are other provisions that prevent them from creating any new confor- non-conforming lots.
Right, the rest, there's other provisions in zoning ordinance that prevent the creation of new non-conforming lots, so this would only apply to existing non-conforming lots.
Then why would we take out the language as before that said, any lot of record at the time of enactment or amendment? I would, my problem, I think, would be solved if we left that notion in there. Because then we're clearly talking about grandfathering, not newly creating.
Any non-conforming lot of record at the time of enactment?
Or amendment.
Or amendment of this chapter.
Right, and then you could go on with the new language from there. I mean, it, it might be unnecessary to have that, but-
Well, yeah, and I, I'm assuming this was, well, as Josh said, this was done in nineteen ninety-six. And it may have been that the intention of the language was to say, we're not gonna validate any non-conforming lots that got created between the sixties and ninety-six, or, or, or we are gonna validate all those. I mean, it's, it's so, that may have been the motivation why that language was put into the time. Technically, we should not be creating non-conforming lots at this point.
Understand, but I think the, Jim's point that this, this, this shows it is, is a grandfather issue as opposed to-
Right, well, but what I'm saying, this was done in ninety-six, first zoning ordinance, I don't know when we adopted it, sixty-six or sixty-eight or something like that. This was just, this language is saying we're catching up all the non-conformings and making them all okay as of five two ninety-six. Again, now, if we've created non-conforming lots since then, you're right, those, those would not be permitted based on the existing language to do anything. But if we adopt the new language, any non-conforming lots that were created after ninety-six would in fact-
Well, there are some, because there are some residual lots, because we define residual lot. And a residual lot is a non-conforming lot. So I, I mean, this gets, there is an entanglement, uh, uh, that, that concerns me.
So if you keep that ninety-six language, then anybody whose lot wasn't created before five two ninety-six, they're out, they're out.
How do we, uh, how do we create it with residual lots? I mean, if you, if you've got three acres, you can't cut off two acres and leave one, or you shouldn't be able to.
You can. That's the thing with, with non-conforming lots, is they're a finite thing. Unless we, unless we enact a change to the minimum lot size in ag zoning, they're, they're not, no, no more being created. They're actually going away because most people tend to, they're buying lots into, into bigger, bigger parcels.
Right.
And I also, I should point out too, in, in industrial and commercial zoning, there is no minimum lot size. So this actually technically doesn't apply. It's really only residential and agriculturally zoned properties.
And of course, I mean, changes in the, changes in the zoning ordinance could always create non-conforming lots. If we said, if we suddenly changed everything to five acre minimum lot size, then we would suddenly have all kinds of non- If we said, if we suddenly changed everything to five acre minimum lot size, then we would suddenly have all kinds of nonconforming lots out there.
But under those circumstances, the orig- the bu- the way this reads, if we were to cre- uh, set it as five acres minimum. Now, I've got a bunch of two acre ones, the way this reads, a guy could still build on his two acre.
It it sounds like the concern I'm hearing is, we have a, we obviously have a list of a a permitted uses and special uses. And the language before speci- or the current language, I should say, specifically restricts them to a single family dwelling and no more. And I think the concern is that this could potentially be an expansion of that, so.
You're saying we shouldn't be able to create nonconforming lots, what if somebody owns two acres? And a portion of that two acres is the state maintained road? The state comes through, makes improvements on it. They take a third of an acre. This now becomes a nonconforming lot, can somebody still build on it? Or not? They didn't create it being nonconforming, the state taking over, you know, construction of the road and everything, has created a nonconforming lot, so that's where.
Either way, the old language or new language, if that lot existed in ninety six, yes, the answer would be yes, if it was an existing lot, the state taking something. Wouldn't affect, because even old languages, single family dwelling would be allowed in new language and nonconforming lots, as long as they can meet the setbacks and the other requirements.
Because the, the uh, the taking of a piece of the lot by the state would be the constant, similar to the fact that we changed the zoning ordinance.
Well, if it was, it, well, ironically, under the old language, they could still build a single family dwelling, say, uh, yeah. If, as long as it was before ninety six, it would became nine, nonconforming after, so it was a conforming lot in ninety six, and then the state came along, took a third of it after ninety six.
And that's my question.
Under the existing language, I would say, no, they can't build one.
And I'm, I don't, just from my understanding is, I don't think that was the intention of the provision, I think it was to be permissive rather than restrictive. Um, I don't think anybody was trying to restrict someone from being able to build a house on property if they meet setbacks, and that was always. Um, the intention that I understood from that provision and how we've at least administered that since I've been here.
And that seems to be a sensible way to go about it.
That does, it's.
Josh, just, I'll change this up, you, but the very last paragraph, I'm I'm blanking on what a lawful nonconforming sign does.
If, well, to use, um, Mr. Crozier's example, if if the state comes in and declares a wider right of way than what currently exists, cause we do have setback requirements for signs. If they come and make that twenty feet wider, they would end up with a nonconforming sign, but that would be a lawful nonconformity, because it's not something that the property owner caused to be nonconforming.
So, basically, it means a, a, you're talking about basically a grandfathered nonconforming, or a, or a, is really what you're referring to there.
Correct.
It's lawful because it's grandfathered in.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Closing the public hearing. All right, now.
Well, I I, my only comment is, it's a, it's a general comment, uh, that cuts all across all of these things, and it's just a general philosoph- statement of philosophy. You know, uh, when it comes to these nonconformities that, uh, exist, um. Not because somebody went out and deliberately tried to bring them about, but because of circumstances that exist, uh, it seems to be that that we should be lenient rather than restrictive.
Okay.
And I, and I think we, I think we do every, I think we do all the the public a disservice when we start worrying about little, my new little, worrying about every little, stopping up every little rat hole. Where somebody might possibly score through at some point, I think it's better if we take a more, uh, you know, we wanna, we we've got a goal and we're basically moving toward that, but we're not gonna fix wrong in a day, and. We have to consider the consequences on on individuals, uh, as we, as we deal with this stuff. So, I I, I, that would be my goal, and I would hope it's the board's goal as a g- as a general, the general rule, not that we're always gonna agree on every fake.
Can I get a motion on the, uh, and on the draft as written?
So, moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a second, okay, now, any further discussion? Anybody who wants to amend the motion for wording changes?
I mean, I, my objective was just to make sure we are, we're not signaling the, the ability to create newly nonconforming, newly created nonconforming lots, and I. It it sounds like we think we're not doing that, I mean, I agree with your philosophical statement, if you, if you inherit one by, you know, other than your own doing, you should be able to do something with it, we wanna be lenient in those cases. But I also don't wanna be sort of opening the door to to mischief.
No, the the intentional, uh, uh, production of nonconforming lots, we should frowned upon.
Right, right, and that's really my, my, that was what caused my, my question is, are are we okay with this language from that perspective? We're not creating, and it, it sounds like we, we're okay.
Well, if that's how we're doing it now, then.
I would suggest we're probably more the cause of nonconforming lots than anything else.
Wouldn't surprise me a bit.
Okay.
I, I would make one.
Move, we just made this board.
Just one suggestion, um, at this point, if the board wanna entertain it, um, in that language, if we wanted to add any by right use permitted? Cause there are quite a few special uses we permit in ag zoning, I don't know that necessarily we wanna encourage those on nonconforming lots. That's just a suggestion at this point.
No, because the the by right, they have a, they have an opportunity to come in here, I mean, uh, on the special use, they wanted to try coming in here for a special use. And we can see that it's a nonconforming lot, that makes their, their, uh, uh, what they have to go, go through a little harder.
The, help me out a little bit here, Josh, the, the, in agricultural zoning, we have a, a two acre minimum, a lot size, for the purpose of building a house on it.
For the purpose of creating a lot.
Well, for the purpose of creating a lot, but we're also, we've been discussing building a house, we're not, no one's suggesting you can't have a garden, or, or a barn, or anything like that.
But to create, to create that lot, don't you have to have septic? And well location?
Unless you're doing a bona fide agricultural division, yes.
I'm not talking about creating anything, I'm talking about an existing, I'm talking about, somebody owns three quarters of an acre somewhere. It's, it's a nonconforming lot, currently can they put a house on that?
Sure, as long as they can meet setbacks, they can do it.
Okay, currently can they put a garden on it?
Absolutely.
And they can put a fence around it and put a cow on it? So, to that extent, then, anything they, that is allowable in the agricultural zone, subject to setback, they can do on that three quarters of an acre.
Correct.
Plus the, plus any requirements that the health department would have for septic systems and wells.
Right, but I mean, that's, that's a house.
That's a house, I mean, if you.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about it, and or business, but I mean, other, I'm talking about any other uses, so, anything you can do in agricultural zone, you could do on that, the fact that it's three quarters of an acre is not, not relevant.
Not, not the way, yeah, not the way we administer it, that, that you're correct.
Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. I just wasn't sure I was gonna get, uh, five votes on it, so.
Now, we already got our lot in the last two years.
Okay. All right.
The left, the left end of the board held.
All right. Okay, those are public hearings, we get back to our regular agenda, we go to the county administrator's report.
Oh, I have no reports for you.
Okay, uh, next is new business. Munis project.
This is an update on the Munis financial software and a request for a budget transfer. The financial software project was transitioning from the A S four hundred Bright system to Munis, which is a Windows based system. Approved in August two thousand twelve, and it will be coming to a close in the next few months. Um, the building inspections and zoning departments are scheduled to be live on the new system by the end of the current fiscal year. Uh, presently, we already are running general ledger, budget, accounts payable, procurement, payroll, position control, miscellaneous receipts, dog tags, and fixed asset modules. Along with, um, property tax billing and collections, income tax, and the mills tax. The final area of the initial implementation is the general billing, which includes, uh, landfill billing, childcare billing, airport billing for hangar rentals and that sort of thing. And possibly, uh, library fee billing, being able to pull in those fees from libraries. Attached is a detailed breakdown of the project budget and the associated costs to date. At this time, we have a total of about twenty thousand dollars encumbered, but not yet expended on the initial purchase order. As you may recall, the original contract included a total of a hundred and thirty one training days and an estimated. For the associated travel expenses, uh, we expect to need a total of thirteen additional training days to complete training for the commissioner of the revenues office, the treasurer's office, and the building inspections and planning and zoning department implementation. The training for general billing is estimated to take, uh, about three days, and along with five additional days, for.
Three to five.
Three to five. And the total estimated to complete the project with the additional training days is twenty four thousand four hundred and seventy six dollars. And this is available in the unspent remaining balances of several capital improvement projects that have been completed already within this fiscal year. Um, the request to transfer these unspent balances represents approximately five percent of the total project budget. And is necessary to bring the project to a close while properly training the staff to ensure the most efficient use of the new software and its capabilities. Do you have any questions about the project so far, or?
But you didn't have to spend that money again.
No, sir, I, these lineups are put in the memo.
What's that?
Mr. T L I, we're having a sidebar, source of funds. Is there more to the Munis training than was anticipated?
Yeah, there have been more additional days for various staff, training, staff's always difficult, because people learn in different ways and at different levels. And they approximate, based on their experience of implementing local governments, the number of training days in the original contract.
Once we fe- finish the initial training, how do we deal with continuing training?
Well, Tyler Technologies, um, on their support portal, they have a thing called Tyler Communities. Which is a, um, kinda like a group think tank for other customers, that several of our departments are already using. They also have Tyler University, which they do online video training, and, and they have, um, various conferences and that sort of thing.
So, this is just initial training for these, have we had a matter of some staff rotate in and out that has, that has affected this as well?
Um. It hasn't been so much turnover, but I mean, th- there, there were some challenges with Donna's passing, you know, in the commissioner's office, and. That caused some of the rest of the staff to change roles, and, you know, just the scheduling of having the trainers come in, because most of them were flying in from other states. And, um, and, you know, weather comes into play when we've had, uh, you know, snowstorms or what have you that would impact their flight, or when they need to arrive or leave. So, um, as Larry said, it's, you know, they, they do an estimate on the front end, and, um. And that's where we had the hundred and thirty one days, but then the travel expenses were always, you know, um. A real estimate, because it depends on how much lead time they have for booking flights and that sort of thing.
All right.
But they do offer some training, um, via the go to meeting, so it's not, th- they're not on site, and we have taken advantage of that in. Instances where we felt like it would be effective, um, to be able to save the travel dollars. And that will, um, you know, continue to be available to us should we need it, um, but we.
That's always hard, though, watching somebody else push the buttons on the computer, and just watching a cursor move, because they move at the speed of, I know how it works.
We are getting.
And you're, you're looking at it at the speed of, I haven't got a clue what you're doing.
Right.
Are the instructors confident? This number of days will.
Finish us up.
Larry's probably had more discussions with them about that.
Yeah, they've, we went back and reviewed this a couple of different times to make sure that we felt this was adequate, um, with the training days. To cover the rest of the implementation for the building and planning and zoning, along with the miscellaneous billing stuff.
All right, anybody, any further questions?
No.
Can I get a motion?
No mood.
I have a second.
Second?
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay, next item. Acquisition of voting machines, do you wanna, yeah.
The last board meeting, staff were instructed to reach out, um, to the state contract and reach out to, um, election services online for a quote to purchase. Additional, um, add on components to our voting equipment in order to have it be, have a compliant, um, Donnie Yanni reached out and received a quote. Um, from election services online, and that is appended to the memo, um, with some extra supplies, rules, and, and things of that nature.
Does this machine work with our existing?
It's my understanding, if if this is our existing machine, it's an add on component part that sort of will, will click in to place and allow it to be compliant, so it's not a brand new machine. It's a component piece that attaches to our current machine.
Gives it the paper capacity.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it still creates the same papers, then?
Yes. But it is not a brand new machine, it's, it's a component part.
Okay.
One quick question, Stephanie, I recall, today's is authorized to purchase this, and then, the source of funds for this, I know we had that conversation.
Sorry, um, that was actually in the budget amendments that were approved on the consent agenda.
Yeah, we did.
So, the money is available, you choose to approve.
Yeah.
That's why it was in the.
I thought about pulling that out, but, uh.
Not that I don't pay attention to our agendas, uh, okay.
The source of funds is, um. The transfer to the debt service fund, um, there's not as much needed, because the lease purchase for the ambulances was finalized, uh, halfway through the fiscal year, so. There was half a year's payment there that can be redirected.
This is not connected with the senior plan.
Not the senior plan, no connection at all.
Um. Is this, is this for, because they need one for each precinct, right?
That is my understanding, yes.
And is this for one machine, or, was that?
Yeah, one for each, like, yeah.
And then there's a few extra in case something happens, I think they.
So, this covers everything, this is not one machine, this is.
Correct, it's fifteen, it's it's fifteen of these.
Yeah, okay, but I didn't, I meant the, yeah, okay.
With some spare.
I do see that there, but it didn't, I'm looking down here at the cost, I was actually looking at the one, and and I think Jim's wondering too, what a, what a sip and fuck mouthpiece is.
Yeah, uh, uh, it's, those would be for folks that have, um, well, have no, uh, hand, or paralyzed, and they, they would blow through a tube, like a straw.
They're paralyzed. Okay.
What happened to? Or pu- use the straw to, to.
If they can't do that, they're dead.
Somebody, what happened to days of someone?
Came to Chicago.
Yeah, assisting them with their.
Well, Donna actually covered that, that's means it, it's not, that's, that does not fulfill any yet, and that cannot be assisted.
Just seems absurd to me.
Well, I, I, I plan to add this to my list of unfunded mandate conversations with our legislators because it, the way this works, it, it's actually a, takes the form of an unfunded mandate.
I'm not sure though, that, I don't think we can probably blame the state for this.
I know, but it's, it's for sport.
This has the, this has the whip in the federal.
Well, the ADA does, but the fact that it was the state that, uh, killed our old machines.
Not because they weren't ADA compliant, because of the, uh, the fact that they were wireless.
Security.
Well, I think we're talking about multiple things, I think we were talking about sip and puff. Sip and puff, I think that's probably a federal.
That's a federal, that's a federal, so all those little spare, yeah, all right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that-
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, uh, excuse me, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's it, aye.
Okay, all right.
I pro, I protested aye.
Yes.
Very quiet, aye from the right this time.
Thank you.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Strevany.
We gotta keep him on his toes.
Any old business? Okay, any board comment?
Yeah. Uh, I would, I would like to ask based on, uh, what we heard tonight, that we request for additional information and time from our friends at Dominion.
From our what?
Friends at Dominion.
Oh, okay.
In a resolution, or whatever means.
So what do we-
Do you want a letter from, do you want a letter over the chairman's signature requesting X?
Or do we want, uh?
Or a joint, or a resolution from us? If, if it's on with the board, I didn't, for me.
Well, if, if we're talking about, uh, getting all the pleadings and filings is what we're talking about?
No.
No, just a, a, a resolution on record, um, that we would ask, uh, for more time and more information based on the information that we pretty much received.
Tonight?
Yeah.
So, additional-
Because that, that, that line even that they gave you-
Okay, I, I got you, we couldn't see much of, much of what that line did on that, on that chart he showed.
No.
Well, it's comparable to, which is right wherever it is.
Yeah, okay.
So, if I understand you all would like a resolution, I mean, we can prepare that for the next meeting or, you want more information in, in time, more information. And in doing so, to allow, uh, the board to understand this alternative route that was proposed tonight, before you actually take a position on it.
Right.
So, um, if I can make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, is, is we could have a letter from the chairman to Dominion asking for more information. Uh, and that, uh, in doing so, does not change the board, the board's not taking position one way or the other, and will do so once it receives full and complete information. And then at that point, then we could deal with maybe an adopted resolution, I'm looking at county attorney at that.
Yeah, I think the way we would word is that we're asking for the, uh, among other things, the underlying data, yes, we've given us this map, but it'd be very helpful to have the underlying data as to how those routes were calculated, you know, there, there's backup to this map, there's backup.
And a, and a map that we can actually see and, and read, something they like-
Backup da, backup data on their, on their rationale for the selection of the-
Underlying and supporting data for the various routes on the, the map that's, proposed routes on the map that was provided.
You wanna add before taking an official position on, on the matter, or just leave that side?
Okay, do we have board concurrence on, uh, requesting that?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Okay, we can do that under the chairman's signature.
Okay. All right.
That's fine.
All right.
We'll get that out pretty quick.
Okay, uh, any questions on the informational items?
Actually.
Still in board comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, you, you have-
Did you have something?
I have Jim did.
Okay, I'm sorry, Jim.
I, as, I really do not have a desire to, I really think we need to, uh, look into the fireworks, uh, discharging at the eastern end of the county. Due to the demographic change in the area, um, we have, the fireworks been set off on that piece of property for at least thirty years. Um, and I don't think that that right should be taken away from those people, however, um. I've gotten some concerning emails, uh, regarding this and, uh, I think we need to at least take a look at it for future years. I, I think since we've already allowed the, this year's to go through, let them finish the year out as is, do a little research and. Come back with a conclusion as to what we're wanting to do in the future.
Well, uh, I feel the same way because this year, we looked at a lot more weekends. I mean, in the past, we've had one every two or three months, and this time it looked like we had one, uh, uh, every two or three weeks.
Right, and that's the frequency, I think, may be the biggest, um, concern here and, uh, you know, I, I just think we need to look at it. And see if this does still fit as, as allowable with the frequencies or not, or, just whatever, but it's, it's something that I know Mister Frame and I both have gotten, uh, enough calls to warrant looking into it.
Surprisingly, I haven't gotten any calls or emails yet.
Uh, okay.
But they're, they're, those are going over your people's heads.
I was, I was going to say, so, uh, and, yeah, so I, I have, definitely have the, the two opposite ends of the spectrum in my district and, uh. I, I guess I would like a little bit of assistance in coming up with a con, uh, conclusion regarding that.
Any thoughts on, uh, on how we might go about this? What we would want the county to do?
I think probably, um, leave that up to the county administrator to investigate. What, uh, Mister Crozier and I talked about this, uh, at one point, uh, last several days, um, my recommendation would be to schedule this for a work session item. Uh, for us to kind of give you the past, present, um, of where we are in regulating fireworks, with the process, procedure, you know, how does it go about? And then the substantive part, you know, is it regulating it the way you want it to be regulated? Um, and then, after having digested that, you can look at, uh, if you wanna amend, uh, the applicable ordinances and then how you would get through that process. Uh, probably engaging, uh, the operators would be one thing, but also any other interested professionals too. How are we do, are they receiving, uh, an annual permit, uh, or temporary use permit or something, I, I don't even know what the mechanism is.
They, we have fireworks permit and, uh-
Is it good for a period of time?
No, they, well, actually in the past, it's usually been one permit for the weekend, now we had a permit for every day, uh-
Every time, every- Every time, and then we also have permits for the actual, even though they're individuals, for the companies that are manufacturing these, these fireworks. And s, and setting them off.
I thought it was just the club.
I believe, Allison, is that not? They, she processes. And that, I guess that may be through the state for the manufacturing, is that correct?
I believe so, because I, I'm gonna pull up.
There, there, there's a, they used to be called Cracker Jacks, and, and it's a different, uh, different name of the, uh, of the club, but it's, it's still just the guys that like to shoot off fireworks.
A lot of the same.
Yes, so the only ones that we perceive this year are from the Mid-Atlantic Pyrotechnic Arts Guild.
It's ten twenty-four, ten twenty-three, ten twenty-two.
They, they become refined.
Anyway, they, it, it's just guys that like to shoot them off and, uh, and in addition to, some of them make their own. Uh, some of them, uh, uh, actually, uh, will order them online and there'll be a big trailer standing there, waiting for them to pick them up at the, uh, at the site. Uh, I've been up there a couple of times when they've had them and, uh, it's a, uh. Some people, I mean, some people like to ski, some people like to shoot off fireworks.
Some people like-
It's, so.
What's that?
Some people like to ski while they shoot off fireworks.
That was an Olympic sport, wasn't it?
Yes. I'm, uh, I'm looking at the county code provision, it gives me the authority, you know, discretionary authority, it's a many. I have an exercise that's discretionary, uh, issue use permits, uh, permits upon application writing for aerial display of fireworks. Commonly known as pyrotechnic displays for fair association in municipal parks or by any organization or group of individuals under the minimum terms and conditions set by statewide fire prevention code.
Well, I, I think-
That's straight out of state code, that's a little bit of a vague.
I, I think that's always worked well when you're talking about, uh, fireworks on Fourth of July or something of a thing.
And we haven't had that much trouble with-
This is, this is a much more intense, uh, use, and so I can understand what Jim's asking, you know, maybe how we can deal with that.
This is far more intense, in past years, it's maybe, uh, once every, uh, you know, three, four weeks and now it looks like once every couple of weeks.
I think two, a couple of things, one, you could certainly deal from a frequency standpoint, uh, the other thing, and I just know this anecdote, like fireworks have gotten a lot more intense. Particularly in, in the noise and the light.
Yeah.
And, and so, uh, you know.
Yeah, I haven't heard from that lady who complains that her dog runs and hides under the bed, yet, you must have heard from her now, she probably is in your district.
Right. Yeah, so, right, so, basically, I would just like to, to look at it to make sure that we're, uh, being fair at all, there.
I, I, I think we can continue, but I think that, that, that reducing the frequency would probably be a, uh-
Or setting up two, two things, that if you have this many, the, the kind of standard practice applies, if you go above this, then there'll be a separate process. I'd like to discuss it in a work session, so. I think we should, we'll get this scheduled out.
I'll, maybe, maybe we shift it around to town and over there.
Down at the old, uh, Webster brick.
Nelson had had the, uh, pumpkin choker. All right.
Quite tactical training.
We, we might need, we might need a new, uh, you know, this is almost like a, a, a business really, I mean, it's, it's, it's not just a, a once in a while kind of thing, so it's. You gotta think about a, a business that was gonna go in and make that much noise.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, given how much, how much, how often they're doing it, but it, it's also bringing tourists to the county too.
And they've been doing it for over thirty years, so, you know, it, it, if we need to transition-
I'm just saying that, I, I'm not saying necessarily what we should do, I'm just saying it, that it is, it, it takes it to a different level than a Fourth of July or a Memorial Day or something like that, it's, it just takes it to a much more intense level.
I think if we'd had the same frequency as last year, we probably wouldn't be hearing the complaints.
It looked like they were all three-day weekends.
Well, they've always done it on a, it, it's basically Friday and Saturday nights, and if it rains that, they can, they can do Sunday. That's what their, uh, that's what their schedule usually is, they don't really do all three.
Well, it's, it's similar to when you have an indoor shooting range and then you try to bring in a pool table, I mean, it's just a line that's-
On top of a bowling alley.
All right, are there any more old, any more, uh, board comment? Okay, informational items, any questions on those? Okay, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
Does anyone talk to Christine?
I've contacted her by both phone and email and I haven't heard back yet.
Okay. I, I was a little bit confused by the library board vacancies, is that only because we haven't acted, or?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, no appointments, let's move on to the calendar, any questions about the calendar?
You have an updated calendar sheet there, so it's different over here, something's changed on us.
Um, the May fourteenth EDA meeting, um, in order to avoid a conflict with the chamber event, has been moved to the thirteenth, that, that was the only change reflected so far.
You got it, Teal.
Officially moved.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I can't make it. All right, good. Any other questions or comments on the, uh, schedule? All right.
So moved.